Please rise for the pleasure of the pleasure of the
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The one obvious thing for the agenda, I didn't hear back from my email. We did get the draft fracking law Monday. Is there something that you want, you wanted to add, anyone wanted tonight, or should we just put it on next week, so when we make the agenda tomorrow?
Is the new law?
Well, we hadn't, did we actually?
It's just not on.
Oh, okay, you know what, that was not going to be on the agenda, that's what it was, because we didn't have anything.
Okay, so let's just keep it off.
Alright. You might have an old copy of the
I think Katie gave this one to you.
Yeah, no, this, no, this fracking is not on the agenda.
Oh, this is the fracking law.
That's what I'm talking about. Stuart, you and Ariana are the ones expediting this, is it?
Well, I don't know if
I didn't, I mean, I read it, I mean, I don't, I'm not trying to write anything up or make comments or anything.
Yeah, I mean, I, the only problem was we hadn't had it in earlier, but I assume that everyone made their comments by the 25th. I did, him, so I don't
Well, no, this is the new one that he was supposed to, he wrote supposedly to relate the other three.
And he's, he's
And he sent that to
Now have one law for, for both put together?
Yeah, that was, and that's what we got Monday, but clearly, we're not all on the same page on this one, so is it alright if we just do it in a week? Get the, we'll get the right, you and Ariana can make sure Katie has the right fracking law
Okay.
for discussion.
Alright.
Is, is that, anyone have that?
No.
Okay.
We're gonna put it on the workshop.
Yeah, let's keep it on the
The workshop's getting very full.
Yeah, it is.
Are we, are we thinking in the workshop if everybody's cool with it, then, then we'll put it, we might schedule a public hearing?
Thank you.
We get the workshop if we like it, if that works. So, I mean, that can be done.
We'll just do that, yeah.
Because we've got different fracking laws, we're gonna put it on the agenda for a week, because the new law, she got there too, they mixed all the laws.
The moratorium?
Yeah.
Yeah, so well, hopefully, then, everyone's comments will be in, so that we can
I can update it, and I don't have it.
Yeah, so we can just put it on for a final check, that this is everything we want, and put it out for a public hearing.
I looked through it, and I was, I was happy with what is going on here, but it wasn't exactly what we asked for.
And you haven't read it yet, right, Stuart?
Well, I read the one that I sent to him, but he just adjusted it. So, I, I, I think if it's not everything we asked for, then we ought to look at it again.
Okay.
But, well, let's, let's plan that if anyone has further comments that, that are a week, week from now, with the intent, if everything's ironed, ironed out, that we'll hopefully be able to schedule a public hearing a week from today, for whenever the first public hearing
I forgot our
And I guess, so, alright, I'm probably there, I guess, I was asking sort of if one or two of you could just make sure Katie has whatever we need to, like, double check that she has the right thing.
I think she does something.
Um, I guess there's confusion for which law we're looking at, so.
Well, there was hard copies given to everybody.
Oh, then, we're fine.
Um, and
Originally, originally, the, the idea was that we had a law on the table based on one theory, and then we presented material to have a second law, which is on another theory, and it they didn't necessarily have to be put together, they just
Into one law.
They didn't have to be, they could just be two, two separate laws on two separate theories, and
We just wanted to do it all at once.
Just, just pass both of the laws at the same time, if it's that way, if it's all in one law that worked, that's fine, I guess, that wasn't necessarily the way it was presented initially.
Well, you had asked that they, the three be put together as one.
I, I, I had asked that the three be considered, the three theories, not necessarily be put into one law, and I, I think that the road preservation one, I, I think we thought that that perhaps, you know, could be put off, but the other two theories were important. The one that was initially, there was no reason not to pass it, and the second one about Banton, the zoning ordinance, was, we thought, really important, because that's the one that's been enforceable so far.
So, do you wanna do it as two separate laws?
Well, hold on, the, the
I, I think we should just come up a week from now and have whatever it is on the table.
Okay, because we're still approving the agenda and haven't even started the meeting, I'd like to
Right, so
rather than have the conversation about the fracking, that is acceptable to everyone? You guys will check, it's, it's the one that Joe sent on Monday, is the one we're putting on the agenda.
And we're not gonna talk about this tonight, because not everybody has read it?
Correct.
As long as it's on the agenda, and it's the intent to act, if we're accord, to set a public hearing a week from now, I don't have a problem with that.
And, well, Ariana, if you have another, I mean, did
I mean, I'm not gonna make everybody do something that they haven't been informed on, you know? I, I don't, I, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with, you know, taking some kind of action tonight, but I don't wanna force anybody into that, if there's something that people feel like they really wanna, they don't take
And Joe's reviewed them, and what do you mind doing?
Uh, come to a decision, whatever we need to
Alright, I'm gonna move we set a public hearing on them.
Uh, that's, no
You don't wanna do that?
No, but that, because we have a law, I'm sorry.
Well, well
Because I have some serious concerns about the laws, but if, if we're not gonna
Put it on the agenda for next week?
Yes, that's the question, are we talking about it tonight or in a week, and we've already been talking about it for half an hour, so
Next week.
Okay, any, I'm talking to you next week? Okay, thank you. Well, any other additions to the agenda?
Uh, there are two that don't belong in exactly the session that we should do in the public session.
Okay, other than that, alright, I'm going to accept the agenda.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Brian?
That's my
Alright, it's a public comment. Can you give a comment?
You decided not to put off till next week, public hearing on the draft law up against fracking?
Discussion of the draft law.
Discussion, not the public hearing.
Then, okay, my concern is, and I thought it should be a concern, but all literature that I read here is high volume, some water, hydro fracking, and horizontal drilling, whereas in your title of the local law, you use it as, you refer to it, I'm assuming, you know, all that very clear moratorium on provision, provision of gas and petroleum, etc., so I don't know if you need to say that. Is my point.
Well, we can, uh
Yeah, it's not hard to
We'll be discussing the details of the law next week, if you wanna find that, and
Right, okay.
Hence, right?
Um, I just wanted to ask you, um, I went to the website, but I, I kinda couldn't find it, is there a way that we could see what you'll be talking about next week?
Yeah, it'll be, the agenda packets, uh, posted on the website tomorrow, I'm sorry, Friday, Friday, because
Part of the problem is when we receive this, the packets have been already made and posted, um, because we got it Monday, was it Monday we got this?
I think we got it Monday, yeah.
Um, and, uh, so that's why it wasn't included in it.
Okay.
Um
We also didn't know if we were getting, getting it at all, we didn't know it was coming Monday.
So, next week is just a discussion, not a public hearing, like a discussion, and that if any of us want to see it, can go onto the website, that's a Friday, and also read it, and bring up any other concerns with you when you have the discussion next week?
Right.
Okay, great, thank you.
Because next week is the first time we'll be publicly discussing the draft that we have.
Okay.
So, that's when we kinda, we, we like this, we don't like this, change this, don't change that, and then once we, we're comfortable with, with a, a draft, that's what we, then we set the public hearing.
Okay.
So, that we gotta, that, we gotta, that first step.
Right, okay, thank you.
Uh, Erin?
Yeah, I know, please move the agenda around, and just wanna say I'm interested in number four, just so that's known.
Not for you, we won't.
If you have it for me, I've been wondering if you did.
Uh, not yet, we haven't. We haven't gotten to that part.
I don't know what that means, possible screening?
Well, then wait, yes.
Um, I don't have a copy of the agenda, but I would like you guys to have time to talk to me throughout, um, me joining the community commission, by email.
Are you Zoe?
Yes.
We're gonna interview you.
Okay.
And we'll get you in here soon. Uh, any other public comment? No, alright, um, any announcements?
I have a few. Uh, the revolving loan committee will have its second meeting here on Wednesday, September 19th at 6:00 PM. Uh, for the consolidation study, the public outreach committee will have its third meeting here on September 27th at 6:00 PM. And I guess the other thing I wanted to mention, maybe you'll mention it, is that Ariana and I were tabling today at SUNY New Paltz.
Yesterday.
Uh, yes, yesterday, and we'll do it tomorrow again in a different organization for Team New Paltz, so, and that seemed to go very well, and I, and I think it was a good idea to have people from the village government there, a lot of these students were freshmen, and were gung ho, and that's a good thing.
Excellent.
Good, any other announcements?
Uh, yeah, I guess I wanted to say that we went to town down this morning, um, and I guess, where's my notebook? Um, a couple of the things I wanted to talk about, um, one thing that I found exciting is the, um, is the support for local internships, and, um, local collaboration between the campus and the community, um, last May, uh, I, I think it was May, I was at the town gown meeting as well. Um, I basically just asked the question, how do we get more student internships in the community and have more collaboration? And today, they gave out these, um, milk cards, basically, that say, hiring a SUNY New Paltz student is as easy as one, two, three, three simple steps for establishing an internship. Um, and then it basically tells you exactly how to go about it, and who to contact, oh yeah, absolutely, please take one. Uh, I, I was planning on giving these to all of our, you know, boards and committees and commissions, um, you know, and, and, you know, the chamber was there today, um, and I know that they were part, part of what this came out of, is the chamber saying, well, a lot of people feel like they don't know how to start an internship, or that it's gonna be a lot of work and what to do, so this is really cool, and, uh, one of the other cool things that the campus is doing, um, is they're starting to implement, and it's just starting, but, um, is a co-curriculum transcript, which is, in addition to the academic transcript, um, and basically says that the college is vetting that the students have done all these kinds of, you know, internships or extracurricular work and things like that. Um, so there's a, there's a lot of movement there for us to do more collaboration, um, which is really cool, and I have, and I have two interns that are working on local food, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? Uh, alright, then, Erin, you're interested in the spring daylighting, I know that Dave is here for that as well, is there anyone here, uh, besides you and Zoe, who's here for someone specific?
We have Lindsay, please.
Oh, Lindsay, thank you very much.
It's one of the
Number two, is there anything, anyone here for a specific agenda item?
Well, Zoe needs to be interviewed.
Other than Zoe, uh, Dave, and Lindsay. Uh, so why don't we, uh
Oh, they want to tell me I'm too
Okay, well, remind you. Um, let's, uh, let's get Lindsay on first here.
Yep.
Uh, number two then, is there, I'll move to a grant request, is there any discussion? Question?
Are we invited to come and play?
We sure are, for kids. I mean, you can play the games too, but it's geared towards two, three, and four year olds.
That's about bright age group.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys very much.
Uh, and, uh, Dave, if you wouldn't mind, maybe we get Zoe out of here.
It's a great success.
The interview's shorter than necessary than this other conversation, so if you can give us ten minutes, and then we'll go into executive session to interview, uh, is it Kamen, Kamen? Ms. Kamen?
Zoe.
Zoe, alright, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll be right back.
Come on, Zoe.
Elizabeth, what was her name?
Thank you so much.
Thank you!
And Elizabeth who?
Harsha.
Harsha, to the state committee commission.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you catch that?
I got, I got Zoe, there was a second name, I didn't
Elizabeth Harsha, she interviewed last
She was last time.
Might as well point that one out.
And, yeah, move to appoint Alan Rocka to the zoning board of appeals, for a three-year term.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would like to, uh, accept the resignation of ethics board chair, Terrence Ward.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I think that's it, right? Okay, let's, uh, um, well, Dave is, uh, here for fun, so let's try to get him home. Uh, he helped me out understanding the, the pros and cons of this, whether this whole daylighting idea might be worthwhile. So, this, for the, just the ten second version, is, uh, months ago, when a storm drain, um, ran out of East Park, um, I'm getting the cost estimates, I kind of flippantly asked Ruth Ruth to get us, uh, estimates on daylighting, and it turns out it's fairly, they're less expensive than I thought. Um, so, we have two options, we gotta fix this storm drain regardless, um, and what it turns out to be, is that just, citizen on the sidewalk, to dig up the sidewalk and tear out the pipe and put in all, basically, put in exactly what we have, uh, again, cost in the neighborhood of a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Um, the most basic, uh, and then there's a, to do something for daylighting, basically, because through that storm drain, it's not just stormwater running through, I know I'm talking in a big room, and these people don't know what I'm saying, but there are people who might know, not know what we're talking about at home. Um, there is a natural stream that got channelized in that storm drain, so it flows constantly year round, it's the same stream that runs, uh, to the south of the pit behind the hall, as well as, uh, that exits and, and into the Waltville River, just south of Water Street Market, between that and the box factory. So, it's actually already exposed in a couple of sections, and I thought it might just be a nice thing for the public, to have a stream through in East Park. Um, so the last time we reviewed this, we, um, we just hired Kurt, but he hadn't even started yet, and it's been a little while to get on feet, get, get on his feet, and get other priorities done, but, um, uh, we had asked, the board had asked Kurt to give us a memo on this idea, and I had asked Dave to, to help me understand some of the benefits from an engineering perspective, and so he, um, what was the phrase, Citizen Dave?
Yeah, let's not spread that.
Yeah, alright. Uh, anyway, uh, so that's that, you've got, you had the information in your packet, I just, I more, I suppose, it's not a, what's the word, what's the phrase, it's not a priority, but it is an opportunity, because if we wanna spend a couple tens of thousands to have a, a improved park, uh, that's an option right now, but we're probably not likely to do it again, spend a hundred and twenty thousand to tear it up if we decide to do this later, so.
How many?
Anyone have thoughts?
I, I think it's a great idea, I mean, Providence is the, is my Providence River Island, it's my example of how you open up concreted rivers, and, and, you know, while this isn't a river, I think it would certainly be more attractive than what we have now. My question is, how far are we gonna open it, from where to where?
The entire length of the park alone has, roughly, I mean
Just that.
Well, just, oh yeah, just in the park, right, where we have to replace the, the pipe, um, and also a note, in case if it occurs to anyone, we would be moving the sidewalk in, basically into the street, this park is so wide there that the, the roadless are fine, they're just basically moved to the side, outside what's in the park, so, um
So, the estimate is a hundred and forty-eight for everything, as close to a hundred and twelve? That includes landscape?
That's why I asked Kurt to, to be here, because he was actually talking to them, or not, it was
This is the, the bit that was most complete, that's in the estimate.
Yeah, yeah, well, actually, you know, maybe Kurt, would you say something about the two firms who, um, gave us estimates?
Uh, yes, I certainly can, and then, at that point, you may wish, Dave, in his memo to the board, uh, did a, an analysis, of course, and you might even be better equipped to discuss those, but I will say that what I did was, um, contacted, um, two landscape architecture firms, Behan Design and Planning out of Sarasota Springs, New York, as well as Hudson and Pacific Design out of Sorgedi's, principal is Steve Yar right there. Both of these firms have experience in working with the village, Behan has, um, more recent and more expansive experience, but they, when I met with them, um, to look at this project and discuss it with them, I found both firms to be highly qualified to do this, and then, uh, but we can go into costs, too.
Um, Kurt, Hudson and Pacific was much more complete in their estimate, and that's my question. A hundred and twelve to replace it the way it is, right? But to landscape it, open it up, make it beautiful, is a hundred and forty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars. I don't have that kind of best thing from day on, so I don't
I, I did talk to John Behan about that, um, because I had the same question, I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you were asking, the, uh, the reason he gave is that because these are just opinions of probable cost, it's, um, some of the cost is up to us, because the firm would work with the board or whoever to actually, you know,
Come up with all their
Come up with a design, and depending on what design, what, what we wanna do with the park, really turns how much stuff this is gonna cost. So, we could do something, you know, simp, you know, the simple on, would be a lower, and we wanna get lots of formations of shumal, piled up everywhere with waterfalls and such, it's gonna be, you know, kind of like you get what you pay for.
Right.
Is that about, is that about accurate, how this process works?
Absolutely, I mean, Brenner and Lariosa's estimate was for a hundred and twelve, five sixty for just replacing a pipe, a hundred and eighteen for just putting in a, a ditch with a gravel bottom, basically, and then the landscape architects had plantings of about forty-five thousand dollars. Some, there were some deducts, and that for Hudson and Pacific Design, there was about seventeen thousand, and, uh, making the, the swale more aesthetic, and another fifteen thousand in landscaping with the Behan proposal.
That's not in their estimate, though, that's what I was asking Jason.
Right.
Um, Hudson Pacific was very, I mean, huge, but they got everything in here, landscaping, everything.
I think if you look at that, you'll see that it was Brenner and Lariosa's proposal with just a couple additions in there, so
What, they cut and paste that from?
Most of it was from Brenner and Lariosa's.
I don't care how they got it, at least I have a number to look at.
Right.
Well, how would you, that was one of the things with this, is, it doesn't sound like it's all that complicated to figure out, but this has been, I've been pulling hair out. Um, because we're not, we can't get firm, there's not a price tag, you know, it's not like we're shopping for a car, and we pick this out and we get it. How do you, how are the decisions like this generally made, if we're dealing with opinions of cost, because we don't know the final cost until we get the bids back, really, so how
Set a budget for the project, certainly.
Sorry?
You can set a budget for the project, and they'll design toward that.
Why couldn't we design the project in our heads, or here at the table, like, Jason might want this, and I would like a bench nearby, or, you know, and then have the bid on that.
The closer you can get to what you want, the cheaper it's gonna be for the design, so they don't have to do as many iterations to get to the final product, so, yeah. There's a lot of opportunity.
So, I guess, maybe, what's the price range, I mean, even, it's just common sense, like, if we're gonna get, what's the minimum we would have to pay, you think, to get something that we'd be worth spending money on, and what is outside of what we might expect? I, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to just have, get some kind of range, since we can't get a number, just getting a, a range based on, because that's much different, I don't know your, your, um, whether you recommend one architectural over the other, or
I'd put both, so, I'm like, they're both good.
See, I, I saw Hudson and Pacific was pretty clear cut on what they were, so I'm, in my own mind, trying to compare, you know, for thirty thousand dollars more, I'm gonna get a lot more for my money than just replacing the pipe, and, and we might end up with a far prettier and more attractive thing for thirty thousand dollars.
If you could hold them to that, I mean, do what you can to figure out what you want, and then say, this is our budget for the project, we need to
The only thing I don't know, Dave, and you'll have to tell me, why would I install a filter fabric, is that so sediment doesn't get caught in?
What I saw in Behan's design was a bio-retention basin, and that's not exactly a string, I, they may have that off the stream and catching
Mm-hmm, I didn't understand that, but
That's for the filter fabric.
In Hudson, in, in the Hudson Pacific Design, they say furnish and install native perennial stream with waterfalls, furnish and install fire, filter fabric, and I thought that was probably to catch sediment at the top that might be coming through.
You usually put the stone in the, on top of the filter fabric, and you keep the soil from coming up through the stone.
Okay, now I understand.
That's probably what they were looking at, we didn't have any schedules on what it was going to look like, there's a lot of opportunities out there, you got plenty of
Is that a common answer that I got to that question, you know, why did he give us a drawing, and, and one of them said, well, we'd like to work on that with you, rather than presenting with you, is that a common answer, or is it just
It's really hard to do a good estimate unless you've got a sketch, so I was surprised, I, I would guess that they have a sketch in their office, that they, once it's out there and it's seen, it becomes
Someone else will get hard to do it.
I think it's, I personally think it's a very neat idea, if we could figure out how to pay for.
Well, that's actually not necessarily a problem, though, the, the, since it's not, it's hard to assess the difference, that's why we did, tried to get pictures, so if there's one firm was like, you know, landscape work you like better, might play a bigger role than anything else, if you wanna talk to them, but, um, because this is a sidewalk and stormwater project, we have a bond for it anyway. So, that's, we just add in whatever the ten to thirty thousand dollars on top of the bonds would be, a hundred and forty thousand or whatever.
Hundred and forty-eight, that's
And the other, and the other way this works too, as well, is that, you know, we authorize, say we authorize a hundred and fifty thousand dollar bond, um, you know, we, and then we set the budget, and then we can get things produced, with, you know, maybe donations, or maybe we can cut labor, and we always use whatever we want to spend and repay.
Paying for process.
Exactly, so that's, I mean, that's the most common way to fund it, anyway.
I was surprised that the design fee for Hudson Pacific was really low, comparatively, Behan's was six thousand seven hundred, but there's a lot more that would be added on, uh, that was just to get a schematic design, and wasn't to go in construction, so there's
Well, would you recommend, Dave, that we, would you recommend that we sit and chat a little bit about our, what we would like to see? Kurt, I think, has some ideas, and then send it back out for bids from both?
If you could get a good scope, and, actually, if you could provide them with a sketch of what you're looking for, if you could get that far, you would get really tight numbers, I'm sure.
Oh, okay.
Well, you're the artist among us.
But apples to apples, it's gonna be much better, then, we wanna go from here to there, however you do it.
Yeah, so, well, we do have a special meeting we're setting next Wednesday, to just, to tour the two fire stations, maybe we can
No, we're gonna do it, that's, aren't we doing it the night we have the regular meeting?
Next Wednesday.
On Thursday?
No, next Wednesday, the nineteenth at 6:00 PM, Stuart and I have a lot of loan fund meeting.
Yeah, I thought it was actually
And when's our, and when's our next meeting?
Our next meeting is the nineteenth?
The nineteenth.
But I mean, the, the, eh, the third meeting of the month.
The twenty-seventh, Thursday, the twenty-seventh, the paper will be notified tomorrow. Or, Erin, Thursday, the twenty-seventh, we are, uh, the meeting is being postponed to Honorian Capore.
Alright, what was for, um, so, Brian, but Brian, you were gonna say something on the law.
Um, yeah, is this something we'd see running water year round, or is this
It's the same as the, the stream behind the pit, it's not a lot of water, but it's, you know, it's constantly flowing. You ever walk down by Hazard Park, you know, you walk down, if, uh, the park's on your right, you're walking towards two away, there's an untapped park behind the hall, there's a stream right on the edge of the road, just look down.
And that's the big hand you wish to open this.
Six acre watershed, love that, we did a study of the drainage, where they were looking at the Constantino site, and, um, in really dry periods, it might not flow.
So, why am I not?
The storm sewer probably picks up groundwater also, so that would help it flow even when it's not raining.
It was flowing during the drought we had earlier this year, like, yeah.
That's good.
Um
Well, cause, like, cause it just wouldn't, it just looked dirt, like, what was the concern?
Yeah, I
Cause it wouldn't, it wouldn't look good?
I mean, yeah, I was just curious if it would be, like, running, if it's a stream, or if it's like a, like a crook, creek, or like, I don't, you know, I was thinking about the
Well, we could also, the, the design of this, of this stream could also be, you know, it could have pools, or, you know, waterfalls, or whatnot, because it is starting at the top of a hill and flowing down.
Yeah.
So, that's where
One of the keys would be to keep the water moving, too, um, you know, we've got plenty of slope to be able to do that, we wanna keep it moving, so there's no mosquitoes or anything like that.
Um, so, s- these kind of projects, working with landscape architects, I mean, how, uh, uh, you're saying that if we map it out and plant it out, it's a lot more likely to keep within, I mean, are these, are these things that, like, jump up very, escalate very quickly, like, the price wise, I mean?
You can usually get a, give a budget, especially to landscape architects, so they know what kind of plantings they're going to use.
Right.
Uh, you wanna try to get native as much as possible. Uh, you wanna try to get native as much as possible.
I was gonna say, if you have shape, we might be able to have, come up with.
At Henson?
Things like that.
I would think the, uh, community improvement team would be part of that.
Nice, I thought, yeah.
Yeah. Um, cause you don't want trees near it.
No.
Because of the roots.
Oh, so.
But my question, Dave, and this is, I think, an engineering question. We lost the sidewalk because of the running water which was outside the pipe, rusting it and the whole thing collapsed. Now, we've opened it up, it's running very nicely, but it gets directed back into a culvert. Are we going to create another potential sinkhole for ourselves further down?
Sinkholes usually are caused by bad joints in the pipe. Something opened up, the soil went down into the pipe and you've got a cavity up there.
Okay, so you don't see this as a problem?
If it would happen, it would be another bad joint there.
Yeah, they won't have to replace storm drains, yeah. Wasn't, we're not supposed to replace storm drains, are we?
No, you don't need that.
No, so they wouldn't, you know, less storm hands?
I think it's a really neat idea.
I, I, I had a few questions, um. When I was reading through the presentations, probably because the people who were making them didn't have a set plan, it looked like there was a lot of room for expansion and expense. So we know that if we fix it to the way it is, was before, it's a hundred and twelve thousand. And there's, and there's a target, maybe if we do it a fancier way, it's a hundred and forty-eight thousand, but it could be two hundred thousand too, because we haven't got done working on it. Uh, so that's one concern I had. Uh, also a question of maintenance, if you put a pipe in there, it's supposed to last fifteen years or whatever. And it's done right, then it'll last fifteen years. But if you put in a stream with planting and running water, uh, you, you're gonna have a, perhaps a maintenance issues, and particularly if you're gonna put forty-five thousand dollars worth of plantings, unless there's a very particular choice of plantings, for the first several years, you're gonna take a long time to water them and keep them up so that they're viable, if you're putting in plants that are supposed to last for a while. I, I'm not too knowledgeable about that, but I know that, you know, at least at the beginning, it would take a long time to do that. Um, I'm also concerned if we have an open stream, uh, do we have enough lighting? Of course, it's, you know, it's like drawing a line right between here and the college. At three in the morning, we're gonna have all kinds of people falling into, breaking their leg, et cetera. Do we have liability? Does our insurance carrier care about that? Uh, you know, I don't know, it, it seems like it's potentially a tort waiting to happen and I, we have enough of, of those things. Uh, also, um, vandalism is this, when it's open like that, is it subject to vandalism and people hanging out and so forth? We already have a park where we have to deal with that issue. So I don't know if part of this will be a lighting plan, um. So there's carbon arc lights or something so that people aren't falling in it and, and so forth. Uh, now the prices that we have, will they, do they, does that include redoing the sidewalk too? That's all part of the prices?
Yeah, the Brinear and Larios.
So in other words, just what it was before is a hundred and twelve thousand, including the pipe and the sidewalk or whatever?
Right. That's as, that's as um unknowable as the landscaping, cause this isn't a paying probable cost. And look at it, at the end of the Brinear and Larios, uh, the basic, you know, the actual construction, uh, will be based on accurate topography, surveys together, new design and current capital. So this is a, a guess, it's an estimate. So you make them higher and then the bids themselves are really the final cost. And they're gonna accept or reject those. So.
Historically, government projects have many times really gone over what the initial starting price was, as things are added to them and I think we have to be careful.
No, I.
So all change orders are approved by the board, so.
True, but I mean, you get halfway into it and.
First of all, you don't wanna do change orders. Those are the worst things in the world. Decide what you want, bid it out,
No, I don't.
not to exceed, and you'll be amazed in this hungry economy how well we're doing.
Well, I, I hope you're right.
You guys have more experience with parks than the five of us on the board. Is there any, I mean, the, the general speed of Stuart's questions are in the same universe, is it concerning?
Do you wanna bid this out or can you enlist some community support here that might donate services and reduce the cost? I mean, the cost I saw for opening up the stream was really right there with the culvert. Um, I think a lot of that was because they're pretty popular projects for a community to get involved in.
I mean, I would think, I can't speak for them, but I would think the garden club might be interested in helping landscape and be a part. I mean, they maintain the garden down at the post office, they do a lot of gardening all around. I think they would very, be very much a part or wanna be a part of this. The community improvement team are among some of the hardest working people that we have in the community. I'm sure that they would be very happy to advise and make recommendations. As far as planting, Stuart, yes and no, because you can get plants which are drought proof, if you so to speak, that will pull from that running stream a lot of what they need.
Mm-hmm.
So the initial watering would be a, a, probably about a year every two weeks, you know, for a year, to really get it established and going, I would think. And after that, you know, I don't think we'd wanna plant annuals. I mean, if the garden club wants to plant annuals, I'm not gonna say no, but I think the planting itself can be, you know, low maintenance.
And this is a new.
If I, if I, just to get back to your question, excuse me for a second, but I, I think that the, you've got a couple of kinds of volunteers that wants, that she's speaking of, but also if you're gonna get volunteers, people who can do this for the community for some of the, the heavy work at the beginning, uh, you know, that's, I think that's possible and hopefully we're moving in that direction. But I think we'd wanna know that we had that lined up before we stepped off of.
Mm-hmm, do you do some of it?
Yeah.
Kurt was about to say something.
Well, I wanted to draw a distinction between, um, uh, projects of the past, for example, when detention ponds first became required in conjunction with development, um, they ended up being not only unsightly and not at all replicating national condition, uh, natural conditions, but they also ended up requiring an awful lot of maintenance in, in previous municipal lives. They were, they were don, they were dedicated and accepted um, for, um, uh, for maintenance and operations by the municipality. That era's sort of gone as the, the requirements for stormwater treatment, um, are, and, and N S four communities are so much greater. The point being that this is intended to be, while it may not take the original course of, of the stream, it would be intended to be natural and carefully designed, um, by landscape architects or the existing, uh, the folks who are master gardeners. There's at least two specifically that I know of in the community improvement team. So again, when you, eh, in the same way that if this stream had never been piped, we, maybe I'm being overly simplistic, we wouldn't be replacing the culvert and the sidewalk right now if the stream, if we had designed the park and incorporated the stream as opposed to piping it, as was the fashion during that time. And that was a W P A, uh, project. So we, um, this would be intended to be, um, low or almost no maintenance as opposed to what we have is a situation where we must apparently, um, replace the culvert and the sidewalk above it. So it should be designed to be.
When you say natural course of the stream, or how do we get it back to the culvert?
Uh, well, actually, you know, we, we're not actually replicate, we're not recreating the natural course of the stream.
Oh, okay.
Right, it's, it's, it actually would be designed, but the idea would be that the plantings would be so carefully chosen and, and planted that you would not need, it wouldn't be like maintaining a lawn on a large residential lot where you could incur a great deal of, um, of cost regarding maintenance mowing and things like that. Uh, that's not really the natural, um, uh, that's not really a natural, that's creating sort of a, a manmade, you know, turf of acres of lawn in those cases. This would be a, a design incorporated with, um, nature and what plants would survive there, not, not of course, what would necessarily be as aesthetically pleasing as, um, as a certain, you know, bouquet of, uh, of different flowering plants at the time of year. It would be natural plantings. And the idea would be that we'd be restoring what would have been basically a zero maintenance stream that instead of being piped uh, a while ago, would have remained open and we would have designed a park and, and lived around the existing meandering course of, of that little stream.
So you wouldn't have to worry about, uh, choice of the plants to be such so that you wouldn't have to spend several times a year weeding it out and taking invasive plants and all that. It would be designed in such a way that pretty much takes care of itself without those?
Yes, but I, I'm, I'm not, I wouldn't say that necessarily there wouldn't be weed growth. I, I can't say that and I think, um, uh, however, the, the two landscape design firms that, that provided these probable costs could, could probably speak to that with, with, um, a higher degree of certainty.
Dave, from an engineering standpoint, what do we need done by a professional? In other words, you know, I could, we, we could take our shovels, but I don't think that's what, okay, so as opposed to what our community experts that we know about can do, I would think the actual digging and directing would have to be by, or not.
The hydraulic design of the stream needs to be done carefully. You have to allow for different flows.
Can Brinear and Larios do that, you think?
Sure, I'm sure. I'm sure they can. You would have, and Stuart, this might address your issue, the stream is probably going to be at most ten feet wide. And it's probably a foot, two foot and a half deep, something like that. It's, and it's going to be easy to walk in and walk out of. It's not going to be something that you would fall in.
So you don't think that it's a liability issue? I'm, I'm worried for nothing about that?
Well, going to college, I won't say that.
Oh, yeah.
There's just a real opportunity because of the slope. The hydraulics are not that difficult, but you have to be careful to maintaining stream flow basically at all.
I also think, well, I think there are times, you know, where things come up and things shouldn't be done because in a way, I don't think college students' behavior should dictate what is best in the best interest of the village. Okay, I really don't. And, you know, if we worry about behaviors and bad behaviors all the time, then we ought to just lock ourselves up and in our houses and never come out. Okay, and just, and I just don't feel that way and I think this seems like a really neat, conceptually neat, if we can pull it off.
Well, I talked to Nancy about what these costs would mean for the borrowing and how to finance it. But in the meantime, while, maybe while I find this, um, you know, I'm unclear in this process about if, if we wanted to do this, cause we don't really have to talk about the other alternative, it's just two common sense, it's just, it's there. Um, but if we wanted to daylight the stream, what's, what's the next step the board would have to take? Cause I'm, again, I'm confused about how to, how this working with the landscape architect works. Everything else is just like call the truth and you just, all the pieces come into play. Uh, but this seems like a weird piece to fit into the, into the puzzle. Is this, do either of you know or is this something called Rich and Blue tomorrow?
Landscape architect is gonna be much more involved in the aesthetics instead of the technical end of it.
Right.
But if you can put together a plan on what you want to see, even just basics, at least you're pinning it down more and you can.
Well, what I was going to ask is could we ask Brinear and Larios to come up with the hydraulic plan, the actual, you know, stream part, the engineer, you know? And we all would concentrate on getting community people to do the landscaping.
I'd, uh, if you're going to get a landscape architect involved, they need to collaborate with the engineer. I mean, their alignment may be quite a bit different or they may have certain aesthetics that they wanna achieve. Engineers aren't that good at aesthetics.
Well, then my question becomes on something, oh damn, on Hudson and Pacific Designs, they incorporate everything. Does, does that mean that they have an, an engineer?
No.
That, so they are gonna subcontract?
They are probably expecting to work with Brinear and Larios, I would imagine.
Yeah, they'll be a subcontractor for, with Brinear and Larios, I think.
No, but my, my, my question is then there all of the, um,
Came from Brinear and Larios.
Maintenance, the some, the, the site preparation and maintenance, that, those are Brinear and Larios figures and they are incorporating them into their plan?
Yes.
Would it, would we be wise that, to bid them separately? In other words, Brinear and Larios.
We don't bid, we don't, we don't bid the design aspect. That's the, that's, sorry, I forgot to mention that bit. We don't have to go out to bid for the, for the landscape architect's bid. All we have to do is tell Brinear and Larios which landscape architect we like. And they can work right with Brinear and Larios, so we get one bid package.
No, I don't like that idea.
It wasn't, well, we haven't even gotten there yet.
Uh, the cost overruns that Stuart was talking about. I stay away from that.
Exactly what we were talking about before. And, and if we wanna, if we wanna do parts of this through volunteerism, um, I think we would need a different kind of breakdown than more of the package that you're talking about.
Collaboration is necessary, but I, I think your first ideas of what you're wanting to look like, it's really important to give them ideas so they're not all over the board. The more iterations they take, the more expensive it gets for the design team.
So what we really need to do is come up with a design of just assuming that the, the engineering and the hydro, what do we call it? Hydroengineering?
It's the hydraulic.
The hydraulic part. We, we won't understand, but we could just say what kind of plants, what kind of design, how, how, whether we want falls, don't want falls.
You choose the elements you wanted and then they'll work it into it.
Yeah, and then get a price.
And if you let them know your budget on this project, they can design to that budget. If there's a cost overrun, it's not gonna be a lot.
Well, we'd have to tell them more than, than just our budget, because we'd have to say that we, just say for fun. We decided we only wanted to use native species, low maintenance.
That's, uh, that should be built into both these estimates. In other words, in, in my discussions and meetings with, um, both of these landscape architects, they went both directly to Brinear and Larios and had a involved conversation about the nature of the work and therefore, um, they felt they were able to better pin down these costs. Um, at the same time, they were, when I went back to them and asked them for, could you give us something more um, illustrative, um, they only provided photos that you may have seen, that are not scanned so well, but you may have seen in your electronic version. Um, so they were not more forthcoming with act, with, with showing us, like, helping us envision exactly what we would say. Um, they said that that would be part of their work and of course, Dave is referring to how many iterations we might go through and how much the cost might be, but there was every effort made to get as much specific information as these two firms were willing to give in order to get this work in privilege.
No, but what Dave is suggesting is exactly the opposite. He's saying that we should tell them exactly, if we can, what we want.
Sure. We'd need a sketch and illustration of a loan.
It's a real talent out there. You can do a lot of things on that side. I mean, the stream, Brinear and Larios's stream is a straight line, I'm sure, maybe because engineers deal with that.
So that's why they need to collaborate?
Yeah, you can do a lot out there as far as.
So where do we go next?
Serpentine.
Um, poll the board, see if they're interested in doing a project.
I'll move concept approval.
I'll, well, I'll second it. Um, in discussion?
This is just concept approval, because there's no point in continuing it.
Okay, I guess more numbers.
I would prefer to just, I would prefer to just install the pipe and move on with it. I'm not really in the mindset of wanting to spend any more money than we have to currently. So that's that's my opinion on it.
Okay, that's fair.
Yeah.
Um, I guess to be honest, I'm mixed. I have some concerns. Um Stuart spoke to a couple of them, but I don't disagree with you sadly. We can't let, you know, the lowest common denominator, I suppose, you know, you know, factor of this run how we want a park to look. Um but I do worry about what the cost will be and uh
I I did ask Nancy, uh to add the maximum amount, the whatever it was, the highest estimate we got,
Hundred and forty-eight thousand.
Would add um five thousand dollars a year um onto our loan payment for the whole project. That I can't, there would be something amount of.
You said a hundred and fifty thousand.
How many years?
Is that what I put on there?
No, well, that's what you said just earlier, that 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 to really make sure we could limit the budget not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right, and then if it was a hundred and twenty, we'd just pay off thirty grand early. I'm sorry, I can't find the email, the woman.
I mean, I guess also, you know, I I would like to beautify the park, but it feels like we're spending a lot of time and energy and resources um focusing on this when, you know, you know, we're really willing to discuss certain other things on that leg, so.
What what other things you said?
Well, I mean, like I think that you know, while I do appreciate aesthetic, there's just tons of sidewalk or like space that isn't walkable in the village or sidewalk that's broken or, you know, different things that have a utility to it as well as an aesthetic. And and that's where I would prefer to spend the money. I mean, or or money if we have to, you know, like obviously we have to repair it, but at the same time, you know, like I've been walking up to College Diner every day and I've seen a lot of things that,
Yeah.
you know, I would, I would just think would be better spent money, you know?
I have to completely agree with you because I just spoke very briefly with the bicycle pedestrian committee and they reminded me about um the sidewalks that they, that are in disrepair, that they have been talking to us about for a long time now. Um and there are two spots in particular in front of the tea room and on Hugh and that street, and these are places that you know, if we're gonna put money towards it, there are things that have been in the works for a long time. The sidewalk master plan they came out with was in two thousand eight. Um and, you know, a lot of those things that are, that were labeled as poor and damaged are still not repaired, so, you know, it feels like we should be funding.
I don't.
But it's not, they're not, um, it's not either or, we do both. There's actually a grant proposal we're pulling together right now, Saford's to School that does do repairs on the, well, on the
What is it?
Bro, Saford's to Schools.
Oh, okay, great. I remember, I remember it's talking about that.
So there's a grant proposal, yeah, that's coming through with that, uh Blue, we're already looking, there's actually, um, I think it's next I can't remember which funding cycle, but that alternates in the county, pedestrian versus automobile. So there's all, there's lots of other avenues to get money for sidewalks.
I know, but I've been talking about that for over a year now and we never, we haven't applied for grants for grants for it until right now, so when things like this come up and we're talking about where we're spending money, it makes me concerned that we're not taking care of the things that we're supposed to be taking care of.
My view is we have to do, we have to do this.
And we're spending a lot of time doing this. We have to do something, yes, and we could have, we could have had a two-minute conversation like Brian said and been, you know, just gotten it repaired the way we're supposed to.
You know, know the answer to that.
And I I do think that this is a nice idea and I think that this will be nice for the park, but I I guess I just have reservations is really what it is. I'm not, you know.
Well, is it, do you have reservations about this project on its face or you're upset that I didn't spend the time or the time doesn't spend on a different project?
It's about this project, it's about this.
Because you went on about sidewalks and how I should, we should have been done instead.
Yes, because somebody just brought it up to me and reminded me that we have not taken care of this, so I figured I should talk about it here.
Right.
Um, but yeah, no, it's it's this project.
So and but could you tell, could you explain what your concerns are? You just said, agree with someone, Stuart's, but what are the specifically the concerns?
The cost.
What uh, but what about the cost is what is my question? It's not taking away money from another project, it doesn't prevent us from doing anything else.
Well, because when you.
It's something, it's just, so it uh, it's, it really is, it's a matter of somewhere between ten and twenty thousand dollars is not worth the cost.
But it's, it's also the time and the resources and the energy that we're putting into this and and I I'm obviously in favor of beautifying parks and improving our parks. Um it's just a matter of what we're doing and what we're spending our time doing. Um I mean, like there's, there's a number of things that I feel like we could be doing and focusing our energy towards above this is I guess what it is. And I know that this wasn't, that's something that you just decided to come up with and bring forward. We have, there's a reason why we're dealing with this, obviously, um because it, we have to repair it some, in some fashion. Um so if we're going to do this, it's our opportunity to do this. Um so I guess I'm a bit.
Well, I guess all I have to say is we have a problem, we have to solve. Okay, this is not, this is not something we can just ignore.
We're, right, we're not gonna not do anything, I understand.
Right, so why, why not for a little bit more money and I cert, and I have an idea for sidewalks that I just discovered.
Okay, I like it.
Um but let's finish this one first. So for, I guess my feeling is I need, it's sort of like needing a new winter coat.
Right.
Okay, I can get it, just any old coat for twenty-five dollars, say. But for fifty dollars, I can get one that'll last me twenty-five years.
No, I think it's like you can get two coats, they'll both keep you warm, but one's got the Gucci logo on it and the other's just like.
No, because I don't like Gucci.
Well, whatever, whatever your brand of choice is, is, you know, it's like, it's like, you know, we we useful, like, you know, so they're both gonna keep you warm. One is obviously more aesthetic.
They're not necessarily both going to keep me warm. I didn't say anything about the quality of the coat.
That's what I'm saying. I think, I think both projects do the same thing. I think both projects, both options, get water where it needs to go. Um but I think, you know, one, while it is very, I mean, it sounds cool, I would love to see a stream there, that's great, um but it it's gonna cost more and you you're getting it for the aesthetic is.
But my point is.
So we're buying the coat anyway, let's get the, let's get the nice, let's get the fancy coat.
For the addition, no, for the additional cost. You're getting a lot more for your money than you are if you just spend the hundred and eighteen thousand dollars to replace a pipe outside.
Hundred and twelve, hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
No, it's hundred and eighteen.
I thought it was hundred and eighteen for just the culvert, hundred and twelve for hundred and twelve for the culvert, hundred and eighteen for the, just the basic opening and then the more fancy stuff on top of that. The landscape.
Well, just for the sake of argument, hundred and twelve versus a hundred and thirty-five, say.
Okay, but the same. Okay.
I think the hundred and thirty-five is a better value.
But but they're both just moving water. One just looks different while it's moving, one.
One makes me happy, the other doesn't.
The other is a huge. Okay.
I'm kidding, can you really put a price there?
Could you put a price on happiness? I guess you really can.
I'd rather look at something pretty.
Apparently, I think a king to thirty thousand dollars.
Actually, thirty thousand dollars would make me pretty happy.
Plus you have like three hundred and fifty gallons now or something like that.
Sure.
Ariana, you understand what I'm saying?
I, of course, I understand what we're talking about.
What are we holding on?
Do you want the Gucci shoe or not?
Well.
That could be the title, Gucci Stream.
I have two uh
Think about that.
Two major concerns. One is that the price is gonna be higher than we think it's gonna be and we're gonna be halfway into it when that occurs and so we're not gonna go backwards. So if I, if we could have this beautiful project and we could say it was only gonna cost twenty thousand dollars more, then I understand that what you're saying that sure, let's do it now because it's gonna be another twenty years before we do it again. So but I'm, I don't feel confident that that's the case right now. The other, the other thing is that the liability and safety part, I mean you got an open stream, you got lighting issues.
Do you know what liability and safety issues are?
No. Well, but don't you think?
If I do the last thing.
Well, I I did ask that. I mean.
Tonight, you asked that, yeah.
Okay, well, that's when we're discussing it, so we're discussing.
Yeah.
And uh it it seems to me that if you put a pipe in the ground and put a sidewalk over it, there are very few safety conditions and and the people who put it in are guaranteeing it for fifteen years or whatever. So then you know what you got. The other one, you know, I I I think you're inviting some problems. I mean, I I love the aesthetics part of it. I I love parks and streamways and waterfalls and all that, but I, you know, is that realistic in this location? I don't know. So it's, that's, that's why I'm kind of torn with it. Uh and I also think it's a good point on the sidewalks, because I remember uh going back a few years, everyone said, well, when are we gonna get those sidewalks, you know, fixed on the, right across the street on Platical Avenue? Oh, it's a high priority, but it's not fixed. And to me, it's as important to fix as the aesthetics, because it's neat.
I like, I like utility personally.
So I, you know, I'm I'm torn, if if I could count, it's gonna cost twenty thousand dollars more and it's not gonna create, you know, additional safety issues, I'd be in favor of it, but I don't feel confident that that's the case. Um but I may be wrong and if someone explains why I am, then.
Or we can come back when, I mean, if you wanna figure out what the, you know, speak to our insurance company and bring it back and stuff.
Well, what I mean, what I appreciate, um, yeah, I mean, I'll put it back on the agenda, I'm not gonna ask, there's no vote, there's need for this.
No, I, we have a motion for concept approval.
Well, I'll ask you to withdraw it, uh. But um, you know, look, I'm a broken record, but again, if anyone has any questions about any of the things I send out, please ask me ahead of time so I can do the research before we get to the table. Um all of these questions could have been answered and they, this is a product we've done about for months and months and months.
Right.
So there's no excuse, so.
Well, it's also no excuse not to have that be considered in the proposal that came forward either, so I mean, you can look at it as well.
It has to have what we consider.
The safety issues and lighting and so forth. I mean, that would seem obvious to me, but, you know.
And we're not there in the process yet, because we don't know what it's gonna look like. So how, you can't address safety or lighting without knowing where the stream is, and then how would you say?
I mean, have the insurance company and ask if they were gonna, would increase.
Well, obviously, if you're gonna have an open stream, you know, that's different than having it covered up with a pipe with a sidewalk on top. I mean, that obviously it takes a different treatment, safety wise.
Well, to the extent that that a planner can can understand and and address those issues of liability, I will say that, um of course, the the, obviously, streams themselves have not historically been a liability issue. The idea of a naturally flowing stream or even in this fashion, bringing this a stream back to life, um obviously, uh, stream, natural streams cross across everywhere and I don't think um that there's a, that there is a liability issue as far as the existence of a stream that may form the border, the border of two backyards or um may go through public space through, of course, parkland. Um so while I can't fully address that issue, I can say that there's um, uh, the the history is that streams um do not, are not liability issues themselves as they naturally exist.
What if we build?
This uh, this would be building one, but I think that it would, I think it would qualify as a natural. As a, yes, I I believe it would. Now, again, there's only so far I can go in analyzing liability, but there is, there is something called uh general obligations law that limits liability um in in circum, so so that not everything is a potential slip and fall lawsuit. So there is, there is a doctrine that otherwise conservation easements and parkland would almost be a constant liability and almost a source of constant threats or actual um lawsuits perhaps taken on contingency basis. So if it weren't for that, um it would be very difficult.
I think a closer example to that is our liability insurance is no higher probably than higher ones and we have to walk the river.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think you're right, you know, but you did make me think of something. There used to be grant money available for restoration of natural streams. Is that still around?
Well, I don't know exactly. I definitely agree that there have been sources of funding for these types of projects. Uh whether they, their, Behand began to look at that subject um for us and um there was nothing that would coincide with our schedule for this project, which is, um I I suppose we're looking forward to having it done before, uh before winter set in. So the, the ability to obtain those funds in advance of doing the project, which Behand thought would be necessary was.
Well, we probably couldn't do it till the spring.
Yeah, so the the more time.
Would we find out before next week if there are any grant or you know, um, New York State Department of Parks often has money matching funds for various projects that we might be able to get our hands on?
I mean, we we do have our park, our parks fund with enough money to do this. I was thinking the bonding because that would mean we didn't have to touch the park fund, because it's just so weird to be able to get a bond to do parks work because it's sidewalks. So it just seemed like an easy thing.
And we could do that.
The other thing I I did forget to figure out is, it's five thousand dollars a year, over five years, I think, something like that, um with this bond and I forgot because it's hard to tell, we're talking about whether it's expensive or not, it's hard to tell what that means in scale. So I'm try, I I don't know if if anyone remembers the builder's budget. I'm I'm trying to think of what it would cost, like an average taxpayer per year, you know?
Oh, yeah, I'm sure that's.
I was saying, average single-family home, uh, you know, that kind of, so that kind of will be help put some things in the right order if people are having a, uh, if that's objection, if not people.
I don't think they could pay for it out of the recreation fund anyway, we'd have enough money because I think we we earmarked the amount, the, some of it for the project to match.
Yeah, but I believe we should have ten to thirty on top of that, but look, look, obviously, if if I can figure out a way to deal with those concerns, you know, let me, I'll give a shot.
Well, what I was gonna suggest, Jason, is if Kurt come back with recommendations next week of what he's been able to find out about grants and that kind of thing. Dave, I mean, the one concern that Stuart has raised, which I is not a problem, Stuart, because you can find your bid very carefully and you don't have cost overruns if you do it properly. Okay, so that I don't worry about. That's not hard to do. If that's the biggest problem you think we have, that is not a problem.
Well, I, I.
And you can also even put performance bonds in, that they have to have the job done or they owe you money.
It's kind of like a catch twenty-two here. They won't tell you what it costs till you get them in the project and they design it and then you're already into it. Uh so you can't say, all right, we know it's good.
But we don't owe them everything they want, ask for that, ask after that. We set budgets and we work with them.
Dave and I do the bid specs. Because I think you are raising a question that is not a ser, the liability is a, you know, we can get a
Right.
answer on that very quickly. We can get a cost on how much the bond would be.
Right.
I mean, if 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 you could say that it's gonna cost twenty thousand dollars more, it's gonna look really beautiful than doing the other one, you know? You could guarantee me that.
But that would mean we should never bond for anything, because we're we're basing, we're borrow, we're borrowing based on opinions of probable cause for engineering as well.
No, that that's not what Stuart was concerned about.
You could have cost runs uh any place you do things.
Stuart's concerned, Jason, that we're saying it's only going to cost a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars and he believes if we're not careful, which I think we will be and certainly between Nancy and Kurt, I think we won't have a problem that things will be snuck in as change work orders, which always costs a bid more. But you can direct the bid in such a way and they agree that that's not gonna happen. So that's the big concern. And if you only want it to be twenty thousand dollars in landscaping above and beyond the cost of the thing, then then at that point we can play with the idea of getting CIT and the garden club involved and landscape it that way. So I I think there's there is ample latitude here to protect ourselves very, very well and end up with a really nice project.
Well, there've been several things expressed. I mean, what are you suggesting that say a week from now when we look at it, we'll have a better answer on those or or not?
And vote it up or down?
Well, I won't have anything done by noon tomorrow. I'd, you know, I'd be the, we'd be meeting after that. So I'd have to wait another uh month.
I'll be, I'll be.
All right. And it's the twenty-seventh, so it starts soon. So yeah, the the meeting on Thursday, it's the twenty-sixth.
No, I'll I'll ask that it be put on the workshop agenda for a vote.
We can't vote at the workshop.
Hmm?
Can't we vote at the workshop?
If we say we are going to vote on a night of weekend.
You're not supposed to vote at the workshop.
Well, I think, I think that we, I I I think that.
We can add it.
I refuse to add it.
If we agree to add it.
But you already have one that's coming on, that decides to have a public hearing, it's already on the workshop.
She's wearing Gucci.
Gucci, Gucci shit.
If for her sake, we can vote, we can vote.
Right, you know, as long as it's advertised.
I'll have something for the twenty-sixth, because I'm not gonna have time tomorrow morning to get it done, that's that's what comes out here, for the agenda.
Okay.
I just, I need, it's just a couple of phone calls, it's not, this this whole project is not really that involved. Just it's phone calls, waiting for things to get back to you.
So the things that people are looking for is, will it increase the liability insurance?
Well, I got it, you know, we don't, I I'll go through. Uh. Alright.
And we agree, we 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 vote on it on the twenty-seventh or twenty-sixth?
Well, no, but you know, so so let's not worry about the two meetings from now. We don't have to decide when we're gonna vote.
I don't wanna sit and discuss this ad infinitum like we did with the chicken law.
Neither do I.
Thank you.
Yeah, but vote it down.
Neither do I, I've been trying to get this through for months, um.
Alright.
I'm sorry, Ariana?
I take the vote, but that's okay.
Um, but Dave, thank you for coming out, by the way.
Hey, could you, Kurt, tell us.
Citizen Dave, appreciate it, appreciate your work.
Could you look at the cost figures? And give, and so that everybody's comfy. Tell us what cost figures are a must for us to pay, like the, you know, in other words, the 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 call for design, the filter pads. That kinda stuff, as opposed to the landscaping, that we might be able to get people to do for us. Is that possible?
Yeah, you could probably get the design and like the species, you didn't have to, wouldn't have to include that as part of the project. If you wanted to plan it at a later time, it's, I mean, there's actually optimum time.
Project like this doing it piecemeal is not a good idea though.
Well, I think.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of what the basic costs are for the engineering part, okay? The landscape design part, but not. Implementation of the landscape design part, which we could probably get people to do. Could you do that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Give you a ballpark.
And thanks so much, David.
As far as projects and going over the way government projects do.
Mm-hmm.
We kind of pride ourselves, we have a number that we use, the only time that you should ever have a change order is if there's some kind of unforeseen condition that you. Dig up, where did that come from?
Like if we found natural gas and you and I decided to exploit it.
Well, I. We always work on.
Gotcha, Ariana.
You should see my eyes. They were wide.
If a project goes over five percent of what the budget was, or what the bid price was, we fail at some place.
Hmm.
If there was something there that, uh. You dig up, that's different, that's a change order, you can't, you have to deal with that, but there really should, there's.
Right, it's understandable.
If the plans are very detailed, and the specs are really detailed, there shouldn't be price overruns, really shouldn't.
I could.
Thanks.
Deputy Mayor Rhodes, are you withdrawing your motion?
Hmm?
Are you withdrawing your motion?
I did it a while ago, because Jason went through his second, so I didn't have a motion.
Yeah, exactly. Um, alright, uh, Kurt, you're also, uh, sticking around to help talk to us about the moratorium?
Yes.
But, um, would, uh, we usually take like five minutes break at nine, should be early now, and then, is that already?
Yeah. I now.
He's heard what we're gonna do.
Alright.
No.
Look at it.
I left him on the chairs now.
Yeah.
Stop later.
Not crying this one.
Yeah.
So this is more of yours than Joe's, maybe than anybody else?
Thank you, Mayor, um, the, one of our our top priorities, of course, in planning is a moratorium in conjunction with, um. Reconsideration of code provisions and, uh, and implementing those code provisions, um, to implement the. The objectives that remain relevant from the ninety-four plan, as well as the individual adopted component plans with suppo-, which supplemented. Um, our our master plan, our last full master plan of nineteen ninety-four, so. In order to do that and not have what's what's known as a race for diligence, which can, um, invite. Uh, which can, there there can be, it can be occasionally an invitation to, uh, for many applications, even if they, uh. For out of a concern for what might come out of implementing, um, uh, co-changes. So for that reason, of course, a moratorium, or when this is called, um, interim zoning law, because it actually is an amendment. To your existing zoning law, and and also the subdivision regulations. So it's it's technically treated as that, but it's a tool used statewide and beyond in order to try to keep the patterns of development. Um, uh, suddenly from marching in a different direction than our adopted planning objectives and. Master planning supplemental studies that have been done, um. One of the things that's most noteworthy about it is, um, um, not suggesting that we. That we, um, have a moratorium for the, uh, the B-one, the B-two, or the Gateway District. Um, I don't foresee major changes within those three districts, and at the same time, and especially in this economic client, uh, economic climate. I think we we likely wish to, um, not stop any momentum that may be gathering with regard to, um, commerce in the in the village, um. So for that reason, it really focuses on the residential districts, and one of the things that, um, with the, uh, boards. Uh, at the board's direction, one of the things that I I plan to look at very carefully is a comprehensive review of the formula for for density. Just how much density and human inhabitation can an individual lot of a certain size accept. Um, someone put in, uh, a great deal of time, the village put in a great deal of time previously, it's probably time to at least take a look at that. And make sure that it results in the type of development and density that we want, so.
Great, one question, so.
About first.
Um. This moratorium would be enacted for how long?
Uh, term initially of, uh, six months, and it may conclude there, or it, uh, it may be extended by action, specific action. Of the village board, if, um, if need be, and this is, um, uh, as, uh, as village council, um, advised me, of course. This, uh, there are, there are limitation, time limitations on moratoriums in in general, but the initial term would be, um, one hundred and eighty days. And, uh, with the possible extension, um, beyond that, and perhaps three month, um, periods of time.
Is the plan to revise the master plan completely?
No, actually, uh, my, it it's my recommendation, or at least, um, something I'd like to offer for, um, for discussion, that. Um, of the master plan process, no matter how smooth it goes, the procedural requirements are such that it would be nearly impossible to do. In less than a year, and they can often take longer. Um, so therefore, looking at, looking back at our ninety-four plan, I I certainly would like to re undertake a revision of the master plan, but I'm concerned about time. I'm concerned about the length of time, especially, um, with regard to, um, uh. What our economy and the regional economy and the national economy has been through over the last, uh, four years or more.
What is it in the procedure that that makes it take a year?
Surely, um, in order to do a master plan, there, um, there needs to be an awful lot of public meetings held to, um. To get ideas and public hearings held, and there also is, um, there were recent.
Account money.
Uh, how much, let's.
I mean, I'm sorry, I'm, I just, I wanna know.
Sure, no, it's, I I think, I believe that there's at least two public hearings required, and then you must document that you've had public, not public hearings, but public sessions.
Yeah.
In order to, um, elicit, um, and bring on as many, uh, commu-, members of the community as possible in order to participate.
And you think that portion of it is what?
Of that, as well as even the, um, the State Environmental Quality Review Act, um, has. Rather recent cases, in the last two or three years, there've been cases that, um, where a master plan has not been upheld, where a generic environmental impact statement. Has not been undertaken, that's a relatively new development in the history of of New York State master plans.
Is that true, even for an amended master plan?
In a sense, the terminology is thrown around various ways, but really, all of, any update of a master plan is the same, unless it's the first one the community is ever undertaking.
Right.
The subsequent ones are technically updates, comprehensive updates of the existing master plan, unless it's literally a human.
So would you have to do the environmental review, even if it's an update?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
Not only the environmental review, but you you may be forced into a generic environmental impact statement, and that's a substantial undertaking, and that is. Again, no matter how fast you get through the substance involved in that, the, um, the procedures are, uh, are pretty rigorous, and it's intended. Um, not to be quick, but rather to be thorough and and providing, uh, many opportunities for for public comment more.
Now. My own concern about this, and I think it's very good and well done, thank you, um, is we. Put on the table. A review of Floyd Niffen's whole plan for the annexed property. And I think in fairness, that has to be exempted from the moratorium.
Yes.
Is that covered here?
Well, uh, no, I did struggle with that a little bit, because once you do it not by district, but by areas, neighborhoods, or even, um. Large pieces of property, I'd at least want to discuss that with Joe, and I I I didn't, I think that's. I think that's a little bit, that's difficult to design into the moratorium, but that is, that is where a lot of the work went into, um. How to include in the moratorium and what not to, um, as well as, uh.
Well, he he would be considered B-two, right?
Uh, is that the?
No.
It's R-one, R-one.
R-one.
Okay, that's what I, I think there was in.
Temporary.
So that would not, that would be included in the moratorium?
Though, it would be, though, um. We have, you know, two areas, the the B-three and and Floyd, we have actual projects that are potential applicants involved. Um, the B-three's not incl-, is the B-three included in the moratorium?
No.
No.
Okay, that's one of the, but still, but with Floyd's parcel. You know, when once a moratorium is in place, and we start to rewrite the zoning law, we really prioritize what we. Write first, it, but is there a way to selectively lift an, uh, 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 moratorium from zones as we finish the zoning? Like if, say, uh, if it's R-one, and we just turn that, that and a couple of neighborhood parcels into a new zone, because of the ultimate work. Can we just lift the moratorium that once, that's approved, or does the whole thing have to be done before we?
I believe so, and I just wanna make a clarification.
Lee, which one, first one or the second?
I'm sorry, that you can lift it, or you can.
As it fit its sections of the work.
Yes, I I believe so, and I also should mention, the, uh, the B-three is included, but that's first on my list, the B-three district is first on my list. So, and that zoning needs to be put into place, it's not in place now, so what we, once we implement that first. Um, we can't exempt it from the moratorium, because we know we don't have the zoning in place for the development that we'd like to see occur. And and that, uh, owners of property in that district may well be coming forward to do, they're coming forward to, um, produce development that was, uh, considered as part of the B-three zoning project. A few years ago, and, um, the current zone doesn't doesn't serve, uh, those those needs. So that's why I excluded the B-three from from, uh, that's why the B-three remains subject to the moratorium. But that's where we had the most planning work done, and of course, the, uh, the village board had, uh, adopted that as policy, and now we're implementing it through. The adoption of zoning for that district, and that would be first.
But that doesn't answer my question.
I'm sorry.
One, there were two things that we waited for your arrival to get taken care of. The Niffen parcel.
Yes.
And the B-three.
Well, I've, I I considered both, the B-three was was very easy for me to handle.
Right.
In the context of the moratorium, okay, so the Niffen property remains, I perhaps like to speak with village council in a. To discuss some ways of accomplishing that, because it's either, um. Leave that district out entirely, or I'm sorry, leave it not subject to the moratorium. Um, or perhaps there's another, another approach to it.
Does mean we we zoned it R-one as a temporary thing.
That sort of thing.
Until we could get. This taken care of, and I think to include that property in the moratorium would be wrong.
Why? We're gonna have a choice, is what Kurt was saying.
Yeah, that's, but he could check the joke.
What what about the possibility of of having it last, uh, three months, and then have the right to. Re-up after that, and then maybe at the end of three months, you have the answers to part of things, and then. When you reopen, you can revise the moratorium, is that doable?
I think that's viable indeed, um, because, uh. The, um, the adoption of a moratorium is is unlike the adoption of a master plan, a type-two action mainly exempt. From environmental quality review because of its temporary nature, I think that was the intent when the, um, the authors of SEQA. Considered what had to classify moratoriums, um, the state, in other words, this is not just by 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 our local regulations. This is by, across the state, a moratorium is a type-two that is exempt action from SEQA, requiring no SEQA review. So, and again, it's because of its temporary nature, um, that municipalities are limited in how long they can, um. Re-establish or, I'm sorry, maintain a moratorium before, um, before, um, concluding it. So I think we, it certainly certainly isn't the purview of the board to adopt the, an initial period of three months, and it would not be particularly cumbersome. To revisit at the end of that period, and perhaps hold another public hearing and another local law to examine that.
Because maybe you solve. That issue, which is a priority issue for the board, and, uh. Can't be exempted, I wouldn't think, um, for the moratorium until you solve it.
Yeah, the question I would have for village council is, would we be lifting it on, um, on that entire, on any property zone with that zoning designation? Of that property annex, or would we be able, I don't know if we, I don't believe we could lift it from that property and not consider other properties with that same zoning designation.
Perhaps at the end, the end of three months, you're gonna designate it as Q-zone or something, something that you haven't had before, and.
Well, because that.
Because you're gonna do something different with it, and so it wouldn't be all the R-one zones, it would be the Q-one zone, which you're creating at the end of the time, perhaps.
Very good point, and and that certainly would, um, would, I think, answer the question.
I mean, technically, it's zoned R-one only, because. We had to take, as Jason said, put it in a placeholder until we could have action on it. And this man has waited a long time.
Oh, I, it that 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 doesn't, that hasn't escaped me, it's, um, it's, this, these are some of the threshold issues with with moratoriums. Um, and they would come up, uh, in any case where you wouldn't want it to be universally applied to every district in town. So this this issue comes up, and and it's, um, sometimes some difficult choices must be made, but as Stuart just mentioned, if. If this process results in a different zoning designation altogether for that property, which it may well, uh, be the case, then. That would be a solution to reconciling priorities and the time that's passed, um, before we're, um. Putting permanent zoning in place for the new property.
But you have things that you have exempted. Okay, why can't you exempt the annexed property?
Because they're, they're annexed full zones.
The annexed.
Because that's a specific property.
They're full zones that are annexed, not, you can't just, that's like.
Yeah, these are full zones that are exempt from this, but if we if we have just this property exempt, then we're saying this specific property is.
But we really haven't zoned that property.
But we have zoned it.
But we have.
On a temporary basis.
Still zoned.
Right, but we still did it, and it's still part of our law.
This question, I think, is is specific enough that I should consult, I should at least ask to discuss it with village council.
Well, I wanna, I wanna say that I, that this doesn't bother me, I don't have a problem with including it in the moratorium, because I think that if we do a three-month. Moratorium for now, um, you know, we don't know what we, what we wanna have that area look like yet, what we wanna zone it as.
But area earlier.
So so we can work on that first.
Earlier in this meeting. We. Had a lot to say about things that have been discussed too long and not action taken on them, vis-à-vis sidewalks.
Yeah.
The sidewalk discussion came much later than the whole issue of the annexed property, which has been a topic of this board table. Since we all took office, and we have not taken care of it.
But we never came up with zoning that we want for it.
And we said we would take care of it, and we would do it, and we haven't done it.
And I, and I agree with you, but I don't think that means that we leave it exempt from a moratorium without any kind of. Idea of what we, I mean, we didn't work on it, we didn't do the zoning for it, um, I mean, I think we all had ideas of what we would like to. Um, I mean, I think we all had ideas of what we would like to see there, and we had people come and contribute their ideas, we had that workshop meeting, so it's not like we haven't moved on it in any way, shape, or form, but we didn't solidify what we want, so I think that we should take the time now with this moratorium and do exactly that, and we can do it first.
I would prefer to wait to hear what Joe has to recommend on this property, because I really feel that we have been remiss in not keeping a promise, and I won't vote for the moratorium unless that property is exempt.
But I don't feel like I promised, I promised that, like we're gonna allow this to be moved on right away, it's promised that we were going to work on it, and I think this is working on it. Because if we make it our priority and we do it first, and we all, we all figure out what kind of zoning we'd like for that area, then we can, you know.
What if I were to actually have some research and some helpful information by the deadline tomorrow for next week's work session?
You'd be fine with me.
Okay.
But then we can't vote on it.
Hmm?
But then we can't vote on it.
If we all agree, we can.
But we all agreed that we weren't gonna do that anymore.
We're not gonna play by our rules, then what are we doing? I actually think the rules say that we can vote.
It says in cases of extreme situations.
Uh, it says there's an majority vote of the board.
Well, I think Mariana considers the moratorium a rather important thing.
I mean, I do too.
The vote tonight, I I I would recommend would be to refer it as our code requires to the um to the planning board, this requires a referral of the planning board, technically, it's an amendment to our existing zoning law.
And the county.
And the county, it's required to be referred there too. Give the planning board forty-five days, obviously, they will cooperate with us, and they will not take forty-five days, and the county has thirty days, and um they may well cooperate in order to get it back to us in something less than thirty days. Um, but that would be um the vote as well as um well, those, that would be the next step, those uh those referrals.
So that would give us the time to check off.
What if we change it in the meantime?
That's the problem, though, if you if you refer this to them, then we come back and, well, we decide on three months instead of six months, well, maybe we have to send it to them again because that materially changes what you're sending.
Especially in the case of the county, the planning board um may or may not be overly concerned about that, but you're right, the the county, um they they need to make sure that they follow general municipal law of section thirty-nine themselves, so they they, regardless of how they felt about the substance of it, or whether they even if they didn't have any level of discomfort, they may be required really to ask for a resubmission, and that, of course, leads to some delay.
But said that he could, in fact, get an answer by tomorrow from Joe on this.
That in conjunction with research of my own, I know that Joe may have an attorney in court or something.
Do it and just send it off to the county planning, if if we can do it, we can do it, and just include it and send it off.
Do what, we do what? Exude that parcel?
Yeah.
I don't think we can, but.
Yeah.
If we can.
But the thing is, I don't want to.
Yeah.
Hmm?
I don't want to.
I would say, I would say my, my recommendation, my recommendation for changing it would just be three months instead of six months, and then I'd be happy sending it to the
Exactly.
Planning board.
I think that, I I I think your choice is either we don't do anything until you solve that problem.
Right.
Or you perhaps do a shorter one.
Right.
So that you can, in that time, solve this one issue that we think is really important and it's been waiting for a while.
Right.
And and I I would favor that as opposed to waiting to do anything until we solve that, because then you might get into this rushed diligence issue, which is not a good thing.
No, but that that, I think there's an in-between question. I understand what you're saying, and I'm in favor of the three months as opposed to the six months.
Mm-hmm.
But the question is do, are we as concurred to waste his time finding out if that property can be exempt from the moratorium if the majority of us say you don't care?
Well, it's, I don't think you say you don't care, but you'd rather go for that for one reason or another.
It's not that I don't care, I actually care very much.
Right, but.
But no, you under, you would prefer to get it going without even that question answered.
I have a suggestion.
Yeah.
Now now that I think about it, it seems that the B three and the Niffen property have much in common, in other words, neither, we know that there's interest in developing both of the the district and and this property, so therefore, if, but we know that we need to implement the studies and the master plan that was done in order to to create the zoning to allow uh different styles of development that are allowed now. So in a way, they're in a similar position, they don't have the zoning in place yet, but it's not that they're, so if if we take the three-month period, that that might allow me to work concurrently on on both, I mean, they're both significant projects, but I think three months could be reasonable to produce zoning for the village board and allow them to lift um a portion of the moratorium.
Right, we come, we come back, three months.
Yeah.
We can continue the moratorium on the three different R zones, have the B three and Floyd's new zone.
If we have that done within the three months.
I I also don't really see them as so similar, because for the B three, I feel like there's been a, there's been extensive research done as to what we would like to see in that area, and I feel like that has, isn't the case at all for the Floyd Niffen property.
That's true.
And so for me, in terms of me making a decision and thinking about what I'd like to see there, I I know what the community would like to see in the B three area, and I read a study on the recommendation about it, but for the Floyd Niffen property, I feel the complete opposite, I feel like I don't know what the community would like to see in that area, and I feel like I have not had any kind of real recommendation on what it should be, and I have thoughts, and I think we've had some productive discussions about, you know, what kind of like mixed use we could create without using a mixed use, you know, overlay district, which is basically what I, how the conversation um had come up to begin with. Um, but I see them as very different kinds of projects.
There is that distinction, that's an important distinction to make, I I think what I'm what I believe I can do is within that initial period, um do the proper work to justify the regulations that may be adopted for the Niffen property, whereas the B three was a much larger project, um there was um an an extensive study done on it, and of course, I'm pleased to inherit that and be in a position of using that to write the implementing rates. But you're right, it does the groundwork for basis, for any zoning that we'll adopt for the Niffen property does need to be established. But since um the B three, um that work has been done by others before me, I'd like to think that I concurrently can prepare this, and of course, then it's subject, of course, to public hearings before we adopt the zoning, and of course, discussion by the board and perhaps further direction to make.
Excuse me, I was uh in the conference room for the by committee, and I believe I left my pocketbook there, if somebody has a key.
Oh, yeah, no, no, it's okay.
Is there a public hearing needed for a re-up, a re-up of the moratorium?
Uh, yes.
Just passing the law down. So for us to s, to get a an extension of a three-month moratorium in time, we need to start a month in. Then we need to have it written, thirty days first to uh to have a continuous thirty days for comments, and then, well, more than that. More than a month in, actually, if we started it this week, it'll start in about two weeks.
Process, basically.
Yeah, continually, yeah, basically, so that's, I think, three might be a little bit tight. Yeah, I mean, we can do it, but it'd just be a lot of acrobatics, you know?
Well, how about four months, I mean, you know, there's nothing sacred about how many months.
No, not not.
Because we need to have a public hearing, we need thirty days of public comment, or uh thirty days of file of the law for it to take effect.
Yeah.
Um, plus thirty days of pu, comment from the planning board, and thirty days notice for the public hearing and meetings. So basically, we'd have to start a second moratorium the d, the night we pass the first.
The point.
Yeah, it takes three months to get a moratorium.
Yeah.
That'd be kinda weird.
We could just leave it to X.
Does that even work?
Yeah.
Pass two. To do it, yeah.
What about four? I'm just trying to shorten the time so that hopefully this issue will be solved, that's all.
No, because Kurt said it could be solved by just lifting it, we can lift things out of the moratorium as we develop them.
As soon as I find out whether it's by district or by
How many months will it take you to assess whether we need a longer moratorium? If this is a, if this is a a three-month project to get the Niffen and the B three done, then we need a six-month moratorium, we can maybe map it based on the the deadline for the work, you know?
It it also says, applicants may apply to the village board for an exemption from the local law, which may be granted by the village board, only where the applicant's, they mentioned financial evidence, blah blah blah. If we really, if there's something that we want to make happen, we can make it happen.
And that may be the argument for why we could include one parcel, if there's an margin at uh there in the body.
We shouldn't even talk there with that, I think that we should, we should work on things as we're going to work on them, and if within the next six months, there's something that's going to be brought to us, it gets brought to us.
Well, I think, I think
It was brought to us, and I'm, that's what I'm saying, Mariana.
Well, we're, now we're getting circling back, because we don't, we can't answer that question, because right about the level the parcel can be in this one.
No, we can't answer.
But what was the part, your second, the point you were making after that, though?
Oh, um, but, well, I, well, I'm saying, you know, if something's going to be brought to us, like a, you know, a act, a plan, a physical plan of what wants to be built or something, I mean, we can, we can look at it and analyze it, and it can be, maybe we can create the zoning and then you know, as we're doing it, we can, if we really wanted to, I mean, I I don't, I don't feel like this is go, I'm going to be inclined to, um and I don't feel like this is going to be something that need, that is going to come before us within the next six months. Maybe I'm completely wrong about that, but I think that it's gonna take us a little bit of time to figure out what kind of zoning we want there.
Did we really plan to have shovels in the ground for the next six months?
Exactly.
Floyd's product, you know, was that like ever an intention for us? I mean, no?
I I I I also think that using that that clause about the hardship, you're you're asking for potential problems too, because then there's gonna be other people, entities that want to use that as well, as particularly, particularly, you know, I it seems like that's for a particular issue, but this his issue is a lot of issues.
I can see it now, I mean, Floyd is a developer, he bought the land to develop, okay? If, the hardship issue is not gonna work, I agree with you, Stuart, because then you can have some landlords who want to develop more housing, and it's a hardship. So I don't think we're gonna win on that one.
Wouldn't do that anyway, but I I mean, the thing is that I don't have any problem with this, I would pass this tonight, like, I would put this to send it off to everyone we need to send it off to and vote yes for this. Um, but, you know, I'm just trying to make other people feel.
Yeah.
No, because I think that we really do have a moral obligation to do what we promised we would do when we got the planner on board.
Put some sense to the reaction, huh?
But I, but I think that we are.
I'm sorry.
I have one thing, this this precedes me, okay, but when this property was annexed, um it it should have been clear, even if it wasn't stated, that um that the owner of that property was free to approach the board at that, at that moment in time with his own proposal for zoning that parcel.
We did meet with him, Kurt, so.
Yeah, but he didn't come through with a proposal, he, we discussed it.
And we talked about planned unit developments, we talked about preserving the Millbrook Preserve, and therefore having clustered housing.
Well, that's getting into site design, and that's, I'm looking forward to that step very much, it's, I think, I think the B three and the Niffen property are going to yield wonderful results. But I guess what I'm suggesting is that, um in such a case as this, it would not be uncommon for an owner and his advisors and engineering, planning, and others to to come forward with a proposal for the village um to adopt, and I, and again, it precedes me, so I don't wanna pretend um that I was there when this was occurring, I wasn't, but that is, that is commonplace.
Passing this law gets you what you want. If you voted for this right now tonight, it gets you what you want. Because, I mean, clearly, um, you know, you don't do everything simultaneously, right? Though you do work on multiple things all the time, so Kurt's already said, right, Kurt's already said the two priorities are the Niffen and the B three. We've got um actual human beings kind of feeling pressure in those areas in a way that we might not, and it places, just kind of abstract zoning conversation. And Kurt's already said that, you know, I mean, you write a draft of the B three, you send it out to Joe Ariel for review, what are you gonna do next? Well, rather Floyd's file and do that, and then, so you alternate, and you alternate, and he, and he's already said that he can have the Niffen and the B three done as a stage one of the zoning changes. So passing this actually um means that
He started working on this.
It pulls the trigger on on that rezoning, I mean, and and not only that, for the next three months while we're waiting for this to actually become law, frankly, between all the referrals, we're already starting on that, so by the time the moratorium's in place, we may, it may be in the coin, you never know.
If we promise that that's the way it will be, I will support this.
I'm one, does that sound like you?
Yes, and actually, I'm I'm committed to um to prioritizing within this priority of the zoning update. And and I think I can appreciate.
Because I think the B three and the Niffen property have been sitting on the table for too long, and we haven't done what we're supposed to be doing, so I wanna get both of them done.
And those are simultaneous, those are.
All right, then I can support it.
So that's it, that's that's a six-month time. What what the way it's presented to us without changing.
And a six-month time, which will take us two, three months to, for it to be in effect, so we may be able to cha, you know, to
And meanwhile.
The six months starts running from when you pass it, or it runs from some other point?
When it's filed.
Well, it it does need to be filed in the way that other local laws.
Thirty days.
So this is gonna be, we have to set a public hearing, and then we have to do it, and then it has to be filed, so we're really talking seven months or more.
Do we send it, we send it to the planning board and county before we call for the public hearing?
Yes, and it would be, it would be overlapping, if you were to be looking at a a a schematic of time, you'd see those lines, those horizontal lines overlapping as they should.
So only get closer to the actual public hearing date, we'll have a better idea of how much work we've gotten done front-loaded before the moratorium, and maybe have a a draft, second draft of what the zoning priorities are, so that we can discuss that at the public hearing, you know, what are we gonna do once we get the, the moratoriums in effect? So I would imagine at least one of the two would be done before, um
So I'm hoping that we begin the process of moving this toward adoption.
Be uh referring it to the planning board and county planning board for their comment.
Mm-hmm. Second.
Any discussion?
And and just to to be clear then, so when we do that, then we have to hear from them before we schedule?
Yes, that's what I was just asking, I'm pretty sure we can't schedule it.
No, yeah, sure, okay.
Okay, I I'll I'll take the coles rule, I I believe we might be able to schedule in anticipation of those time, those statutory time periods ending, so
So forty-five days?
Yes, uh, for the planning board, however.
But let's not schedule a meeting, if we get comments back earlier, then we can't have a public hearing without chancing and re-noticing spending that money, so.
With the planning board meeting um twice a month, as ours does, um and also the ability to do as as once in a while the village board may do, and uh vote during a work session, then that's um that that should work out with our with our planning board.
Right? Any other comments? One favor?
I agree.
Thank you, Kurt, for that.
Just remember, Katie, you got the promise down in a minute.
I know.
That's right.
I did, I was taking diligent notes.
I'll another donate wherever they disappeared to. Are you hoarding the Mariana?
I certainly am not, she was thrown on the ground.
You do get one?
I put it there so I could see that.
One another.
Sure.
Pick side. Stuart, please, back to area.
It's, they're organic.
Um, they're, they're directly involved, you're, you're welcome to say all these, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt.
Thanks a lot.
Sorry, I'm going quickly. All right, um, well, let's burn through and see what we have to talk about.
Okay.
Um on behalf, are we accepting this, Kate? What do you, this is yours, right, so?
On behalf of Vicki Dan Skin.
I have to keep this.
From Vicki Dan Skin, on behalf of the New Lots International Committee for Pilagrapheys, from our sister city.
What do they mean?
Meaning.
Do we know what they say?
I'm gonna look and see. We are global villagers, there are no borders.
False.
Work to save this earth.
Oh, I love that.
Oh, boy. Is this something that, you think that is, we we should
This one?
Write to whom?
Okay.
Hello, Mark. He keeps it, doesn't he?
I mean, so I mean, do we think, Vicki or we think someone else?
Oh, the Vicki.
She had them.
Love and enjoy life, friendship, laughter, and nature, is this from?
Aw, cute.
And best, but not least. Oh, many happiness prevail to all forever.
Wow.
Wow. Alright.
And we need that.
Sure.
Okay. Anyway, I thought that was just lovely. So Katie. Do we wanna hang them in the small conference room? Well, let's let Katie make the, the artistic decision.
Maybe I should trade it.
Figured out by geometry.
Yeah. Uh, alright, three.
Do we need a motion to accept those with gratitude or something?
Sure, I'd be lovely.
So move.
Uh, on favor? Um, okay, number three is a little preview, um, uh, Sally, the finance committee has been working on, uh. Uh, revamping our water sewer laws and our rate structures, um, we're gonna have, uh. David Mursec, the attorney we hired to do this, at our meeting next week, give all the details. But if there's, if there's Sally, if there's anything obvious concerns or questions, you might wanna see. It is very dry, so.
I'll very quickly point you in directions. What I'm gonna suggest, it's getting late, and I want you to read them. And get back to Jason, to me or to Nancy. With any concerns you have. Legislative intent, which is on the top of what Katie gave us on the table. In terms of the water. Okay, is, it, it stinks our intent, both. To raise our rates, which we have not done in years. But also to have a conservation factor, okay? So that people who try very hard to use less water, which I believe is a finite. Resource. Will be rewarded in the sense that their rate will be lower. The more you use. Obviously.
The more you pay.
The more you pay. That's the new legislative intent, which is. We are including a provision that the title owner, as shown on the current assessment rule, will be billed. Not, it will not be individual tenant water meters. Okay? Um, we're gonna increase the turn on fee from thirty to fifty dollars.
Good idea.
Okay, um, we have amended to refer to the consolidation of multiple meters. To industrial and institutional users rather than the earlier references.
Then I ask you a question, one of the previous ones, you say that there won't be tenant meters, does that mean? You could have four meters in the building, but they'll all be in the landlord's, owner's name.
Well, I think it is our, yeah.
Not just one meter, but it, but it's the one person who's liable for it.
Like the apartment, apartment complex, some, I think some of them have individual meters, all the apartments. So we'd be building metalwork.
So it will be owner referenced.
Well, I do have a question about that, um, in, in terms of like when we send things out in the water bills, for instance. That therefore it would only be going to the person who owns the property and we wouldn't be informing people who live at the property, how would we? I mean, this is, this is something we can talk about later.
But most of the things that we need to notify. Such as tree pruning and things like that, don't involve tenants, they involve property owners.
But tenants do have to, they pay water, like a lot, you know, in a lot of tenant housing. Someone within the house will pick up the bill, now.
This, the landlord.
Landlord has to do it, so I mean, that may or may not leave an opportunity for. Charging the residents of the home more than what they would normally pay. So like, let's say, you know, you're a landlord and, you know, you don't necessarily deal with that, you can be like, uh, you can spend eight hundred dollars in this month.
That's a, that's a landlord tenant lease provision. How that's handled, that should not be a village problem.
Yeah, and my, you know, I had a landlord who, you know, everything was included and, uh. You know, we, we actually had a running toilet for one month, they noticed me, they like covered the bill. But I've heard of the opposite happening with people with students.
We've had it before us, yeah.
You recall, we had that issue.
We've had a number of those questions before us.
So I, I don't, I, I mean, I hear what you're saying, cause I, I think it could go either way, but I think it could go either way right now.
It's not, I mean, we, um.
Cause that's something more of like, it's, it's an all inclusive, uh, you know, lease basically, if your rent is all included and then. Or if it's not. Anyway.
Wait, hold on, before moving on, um, we could sidestep the notification. Cause it's, it's sometimes is more than just a tree pruning with, with the property owner, but if there's notification they need to send out. Um, Kathy and I are working on, um. I'm gonna be proposing some code changes that involve notification of tenants for certain things in the village, including with, when, um. Application coming before the planning board. That, you know, not just the property owner, but the people who live next door, they naturally get it. So we realize that all we can do is we simply just can mark it on the municipality and just send it out to, or, you know, current resident. You have all the valid addresses, and if people don't open their mail, then there's only so much we can do.
Right, right.
You know, so that could sidestep that, like have a whole other category. Like mark that, like all the water bills notices are only to for property owner only information.
Right, we could, we could use our, uh, our like rental property, registered rentals, uh, list.
Yeah, we can basically set up sort of like an automatic mailing list.
After we get this done, we ought to talk about a complaint board within the landlord tenant committee. Where, uh, if a tenant is, feels that they are not being fairly billed. Can go.
I don't know if that.
I don't know if the tenant relations council is gonna be the place for that.
Yeah, I don't think.
Well, we can.
I mean, those of you who agree, but what, what, why?
Be, uh, just advisory and I don't, and I think that that could constitute legal advice and that could put us into.
Well, even if they're, I mean, they're, they're supposed to be advisor, they're supposed to, um.
No, I thought they weren't supposed to mediate, I thought they were supposed to just refer you.
They decided, they decided at their own accord that they, that they were not going to be doing that because of exactly what you're saying.
But that wasn't, that was their own decision.
I mean, but it makes sense because they don't have the ability to give legal advice and they can do some mild mediation. But my concern actually has nothing to do with that, my concern was much more because I know students who will not go to the landlord's and relations council because those people are no landlords. And they, and I've received.
You've sold your property and, you know, you have the water turned off for a final reading. Okay, before it gets turned on for the new owner.
Okay.
That has been increased from thirty.
Oh, okay, sure, great.
Okay, and then the sewer law has been amended and that's all here, um. And there was clarification made to address the confusion and the problems with characterizing water users, which. In the sewer law was very strange. And that there are new rate schedules, which you'll see. And, um, and the resolution is included in your material for both. So, all I'm asking you to do is before David and Marge join us next week. That you look at these, okay, and any questions you have, get them to Jason. To Nancy or me. And we will try to answer those, some questions as to why. The attorney worded something the way it was, I mean, I've, I've reviewed with you the changes. The, that are, are being made in, this is an amendment to our laws, okay? So if you can do that, it'll make next week go much more expeditiously.
One thing that I wanna look at, you remember early on when we were getting the complaint forms, there was a, a question about. Turning somebody's water off and so forth, and we looked into it, what the. Code said was you do it this way, but it wasn't being implemented that way, so I wanna check to see if that's changed and if it hasn't. And the water department wants to do it the same way it's doing now, then it should be changed or else we should do it the way the law says, one or the other.
Well, I think we should be doing it the way the law says, but.
Right, I'm, I'm just.
Those are the kinds of questions which if you raise with me, I can make a list of the ones we can answer. And the ones that only David and Marge are gonna be able to answer, because I would love for us to. You know, this is a big issue, it's a very important issue for this village. We have not had a sewer and water. Change of rate in eight years, right?
Yeah.
Eight years.
And it's really important because we're.
Because those have to be self sustaining and I think the idea of implementing conservation. And if you choose not to conserve, then you pay for your choice, but those people who choose to conserve should not be penalized. Because. You choose not to conserve. So that's basically the intent, did you wanna add anything?
No, you go, you go with it.
Okay.
Very interesting.
And I, and I really wanna commend Nancy publicly for working very, very diligently and thoroughly on this. And she caught a couple of mistakes that really were important patches and she really. Gave really good service for this, so.
Sally, you wanna take this one too? CIT hanging baskets.
Oh, yes, you all got the resolution from me and I'll have it here somewhere. Um, as you know, this, we bought the plants and I can't find mine. Oh, here, oh, here. Um, we bought it because of the emergency that the town had with their finances, we bought. As a kindness and a, and an act of friendliness to the town, we bought the, the seed, the plants. That hang in the hanging baskets on the streets. Um, after much discussion. Um, and the town. You know, really does not, not want to do this. Um, I told you that the cost that, that in fact everybody said was gonna be like ten thousand dollars, the whole cost to do. The plants water them.
Who waters them?
Hanging, um, the can right now.
Well, I'm saying who's gonna water them for us?
One, a seasonal employee.
Okay.
That's, I'm not gonna, anyway, cost, so we allocated thirty five hundred dollars. And the reason I'm asking for it now is because depending upon our vote. The baskets have to be ordered now, you order them in September for the spring. So if we agree to this and approve of it, we just have to remind ourselves that come budget time. We have to up the CIT budget by thirty five hundred dollars. It is our hope that the town will do the holiday decorations, so we're trading.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna do the flower baskets and the town's gonna do.
I'm more than happy to do this, but I have, um, maybe just two stipulations. One is, um, what are these baskets made of that we're ordering every year, are they plastic, are they reusable, is there, what is there?
Some sort of recycled material, but I don't know what it is.
Okay, and what happens to the basket? They reuse, okay, that's, that's exactly what I wanted. And what we're purchasing is the flowers and the soil.
The baskets, I mean, when you realize what we paid for the baskets, I think the baskets we got. It cost us six hundred dollars. And they hang them, we don't have to worry about it.
Oh, I, I love, I love all of this, I, my, my stipulations are not really contingent on whether or not I approve this, I just have things that I feel like. We can, you know, just add, um, another one is bee friendly flowers. Um, because bees are, uh, and in day, are, they're becoming more and more endangered and they're, they're disappearing. Um, so I would like flowers that are good for bees. Um, and if we could, I mean, I don't know, it would be great if we could get something that we don't have to plant every year, but. Maybe the campus greenhouse would house for us throughout the semester, there's somebody that has paid, that's paid. To take care of it, it used to be Joe Vitello, um, our shade tree guy, um, but, so like, maybe there's a way that, maybe not this year, but in future years. We can start looking into that type of thing since the campus wants to collaborate with us so much.
And they have a greenhouse.
They do have a greenhouse, yeah. Yeah, or we can, I mean, it wouldn't mean that we would never buy new flowers, it would mean that we can start to cut this cost and have a, have more collaboration.
The, the motion will be that we will agree to assume the responsibility of the summer hanging basket project. Which is done by the community improvement team, beginning the budget year two thousand thirteen. At a cost not to exceed thirty five hundred dollars and will work with the CIT to continue this community project. And we would request bee friendly flowers.
But it's not contingent upon getting one, because, but it's, I mean. Because they, they, the, the people who pick them choose these plants because they can take a beating over the sun.
But I think Ariana brings up a very good point.
No, as long as it's not contingent upon, I agree with you.
But I want the support of the motion so that we indicate. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Okay, so we just have to remember to put it in the budget.
Yeah, yeah, well, I don't, I don't think we, I, I somehow don't think we'll. They'll remind us, of course.
Okay.
Um, so there's no documentation for the next, the last three, um.
For which one?
Number seven, we got, didn't we get two things on the table?
Well, I didn't record the table, I don't really need to record on paper.
We don't have it.
I know, so it's given to tonight.
No, actually.
I, I put it on there because this has been around for a long time and supposedly when we were gonna deal with it, but then the. The town changed it, we were supposed to rush out and get one from the town and I just wanted to make sure this is moving along. If this just came from the town, then, then we can take it next time or stuff, I just don't want it to get bogged down.
Then we get the inter municipal agreement that has been approved by the town.
I don't, I don't believe it has been approved by the town. I thought they said they did. Unless they did it at the very last meeting, I don't believe it has. And I think the issue, as far as I recall, is that we decided to do this continuously. And they decided, or there was discussion, I don't know if they finally approved it, that they wanna do it on a year to year basis.
Right, that's exactly.
So they might have approved it and then said, but year to year.
What was proposed initially, because I drafted it, because they asked me to, I was the liaison, what was. Proposed was to have it more than one year, that it would be continuous unless, and there was a way that either municipality could give a notice and say, we're out of it, we don't wanna do it anymore. Uh, so that they wouldn't have to. Uh, but the, but the town, when it went to, I think their, their attorney, according to the supervisor, said, well, they wanted. All of their contracts to be for no more than one year, and, and I thought they said that they passed it with that change. So I guess our choice is to get it that way and pass it that way also, or go back to them and say we think it should be longer, or if you have any other questions.
Or we could just pass the more to year one and be done with it.
Correct, if you wanna pick the one year that they already did, then, then it's done.
I, I mean, you know, I really like the spirit of removing public access from the fray, cause I just think it's a very important. Aspect of our government and it allows, you know, people from home to be involved without having to be here, but. I don't know if the town's gonna change their position on.
Well, I don't think we even need the inter municipal agreement, cause we have already approved the contract on behalf of the village with. Bob Bacon. We also approved the contract.
But, but the inter municipal agreement does more than that, it covers.
Right.
How, how the program is gonna be run and what each responsibilities are as opposed to just the contract.
No, but, but my point is. If we want, cause I agree with Brian, I think.
It should just.
It should just go and we, you know, should have a standard protocol, if you will, of what we'll do and they'll do. And it doesn't need to be sealed in cement with a fiscal year attached. Because it doesn't involve money, we've already done the monetary budgetary part, this is just how well we're gonna play together.
Right, and the, the initial agreement, based on what they asked me, what they wanted in there was, it said. What the, that they're coordinating on the leadership behalf of the coordinator. That they're coordinating on, the leadership behalf of the coordinator and it, and it says, and the current contract of the coordinator is attached. And it said, and the current salary is this, and so it was clear. And that they would, the municipalities would agree to carry that forward every year unless they agreed not to. Or one of the municipalities said to the others, we're not playing anymore, here's seven months notice, we're out. But, and, uh, so that seemed to be what they wanted, but somehow that came out about attaching the contract in the mail. Wasn't logical to me, but I, I don't know why they did that.
So what would you like us to do? Would you like us to go on the inter municipal contract as you presented it?
No, I, I think we should do one of two things. I mean, I don't see there's a big problem approving the way it is. But it would be, you're gonna do this every year. The other option is to say, we're willing to do this, but we, we wish you would make it for longer. And I think those are your two choices, unless you wanna fight about the language, otherwise which.
You wanna communicate with supervisor and see where we are on this.
Um, no, I think whoever's the public access committee, yeah, you should, whenever you have something ready, just, that's.
Right.
Bring it to us, you know?
I mean, you know, the, the.
They should, they should, you and Don and Bud are all sort of.
We, we discussed it at the last meeting, right, and, you know, now that Stuart says they may have just approved it as year to year. But I mean, you know, it ki- it kinda weakens the spirit of it, but we could just, you know, attach it to our reorg meeting and just approve it. You know, as an annual thing every year, you know, like, just as a formality. It's not the same. I don't really like it as much, but, you know, it's, it's really up to us because I don't know if we.
Well, that's not what's best, but what's.
Well, it's, I mean, well, I think just because, because, um, I don't know if we can have two separate agreements where ours is.
Well, it's not an agreement.
Right, right, so.
I mean, the whole point is.
I mean, that's what we already have done, two separate.
Right, so I mean, the, so does the board have a preference? Cause I mean, I would be happy to go back to the public access to McComedy and even go to the town board if everyone feels that they want me to try to negotiate on their, on that behalf.
I don't have a strong opinion. Whatever, whatever the committee wants, I'm happy to support.
I mean, the, the committee wants it to be longer and, and I think at the moment, and I don't know, I spoke briefly with Joe Moriello about that. Because I was speaking to him about other things and, you know, and I'll take, that's necessarily said someone has to be only one year.
I'm in favor.
That's what, that, the town is taking his recommendation to make it one year. And if he, if there's a way it could be longer and he would agree to that, then I don't think they, they, at least that's why they said they're not. Doing it the other way.
Okay, so.
As long as we can get.
Okay, as long as we can get?
And if we can't, then I like your idea at the reorg meeting.
Okay.
And, and it's set up so that you can get out of it on a seven month notice, so it's not like it's for, for facility.
So I'll give you guys a report and we'll figure it out.
Somebody didn't take any action, just, no, checking in.
That's why I put it on you, just so it's great.
Uh, virtual landscaping.
Like that, Sally, I think, or it's both of us.
Eight.
That's, that's the business.
We can get a new report, um.
Hmm? Wasn't that the one where the CIT said they wanted to just have, put grass in there and DBW takes care of it at the end?
Right, but that hasn't come as a recommendation, that's being reviewed by Kirk right now.
Okay, well.
That goes on next.
And, and what about, I mean, food melons obviously didn't happen, it couldn't happen this year. And then the ENCC does what BikePad does, where they take the summer, NTIC, where they take the summer off. So this month they're having a meeting again, but I know that they want to do that, um, you know, and the chairman talked to the CIT and they, he said that. He was taken aback by, um, how many comments they had, but that a lot of them were very useful and they wanted to incorporate that and actually, you know, work on this as a plan.
Well, then I think the ENCC oughta make over tourists to meet with the CIT and come up with a compromise.
I, I was, I was there at the meeting when the chairman was there and he presented a great presentation and, uh, and the CIT people have. You, you know, I have several master gardeners there and they, and, and it wasn't, it was a friendly meeting, but it just. This won't work because of this and this and this and this, and they gave him a list and he left and now it's the last I heard of it. So I don't know if he's still looking into that or what he's doing.
Well, I said to David, he was looking for private front yards to do it. That way just less permission, you know, than you need to do it. But I don't know, Bill's wild, I'll be, you know, I don't know.
That's the real idea behind it. Anyway, the real idea behind it is not village hall.
I think more forty-eight, Ron, here is.
Village hall is supposed to be setting the precedence and being, you know, the leader in all of this and having the municipal property do it too. And then we can donate our vegetables to the family. New Pauls while other people keep their vegetables.
No problem with that, it's maintenance and.
I know, well, that's why, and I said to them, a lot of them.
And I believe, and I think the CIT absolutely believes, the simpler, the better. So that we always look neat and tidy, which we don't look.
I know, but if we don't look that way now, why can't we do something cooler and then still not look neat and tidy?
I, I think.
Cause we can have fun and be a mess.
I might need to play the logic of that to me.
I think there's a significant, significant.
We all look good now, so do something good and not look good.
I think there's a significant number of people who, who don't agree.
Well, yes, there's maybe not a lot to do.
That's the place to do that, that, that municipal building, I mean, I know you don't feel that way, but there are other people who do feel like. You know, municipal buildings have a certain decorum and so forth.
Alright.
You don't have to agree with it, but that's their.
Well, well, anyway, so.
Why don't we wait till the recommend?
I would rather say.
I was gonna say, if, if there is, if there's some sort of joint agreement between the two of them. Where, you know, we can toss in, you know, some bushes that bear fruit or whatever the case may be. And then have, you know, aesthetically pleasing to some flowers and manicured things and have like a blend of both. Or like we were talking about putting a garden, you know, somewhere within the area and just taking a piece of our grass out.
Right.
Um, that people are willing to like upkeep and, you know, all of those things and.
That's the issue.
We have that word, right.
Well, I think that's, that's part of why after the CIT meeting happened, where David went and got all these recommendations. He brought it back to the ENCC and a lot of them were things that people like, oh, we didn't think about that, you know? Um, but then, then they said, well, why don't we try to spend this next period of time amassing more volunteers? And building up the excitement around it, um, and having a real solid program, it's like the New Pauls youth program. They wanna do this, they totally are on board. The biggest thing is having somebody who works with them and supervises.
I don't understand the contradiction. How does planting grass prevent a garden from going in? Because if they're waiting to plan and it's, it's been a while, keeping trying to get it off the ground, why don't we just do what the CIT is asking? And then if someone comes up with a great plan, it's better than that.
I just don't wanna suspend time and energy and resources on something that's going to change in the near future. Just grass is just grass. I mean, if it doesn't take a whole lot of our time and resources, plant it, the winter's coming. It's not really, it's kinda moot, moot point anyway.
The point is that what we have now is not being maintained and properly. And how much time do we expect village employees to expend maintaining? And they all agree that that is not their area of expertise. So that is why the CIT is recommending grass everywhere. But as Jason said, that doesn't preclude in the future, something else.
And the CIT had a, had a long list of things on the property here that they suggested would be done, so I mean, I think everybody has.
And Kurt has that plan, which he is looking at.
I mean, not for nothing, the ENCC is like an official village agency.
Doesn't mean they get control over the buildings and grounds.
No, of course not, but in terms of, in terms of things that we want people to collaborate on.
No, the, the ENCC.
I think like, we should get them to collaborate on it.
Community improvement.
Oh, no, by no means would they ever, the, the role is completely different.
Right.
I, I don't, I don't think that they would replace something, but like, we should, you know, encourage and give, and have them work together on this. And I think it's kind of a moot point, since winter's coming, we're gonna stand up to the grass.
Work together.
Well, I, I, I don't know.
That's true, we only have one meeting.
I don't know if the CIT is opposed to the concept, I think they're opposed to the concept in front of Villa Chalk, I think, you know, that's the issue.
And, and maybe it won't be in front of Villa Chalk, but they could still help with the plan and the idea and give good advice. Because they have a, they have a lot more opt.
I'm sure they're willing to do that if you.
Yeah.
Right, like some, some plantings in Peace Park or like around the edge or whatever it has to be, I mean, even if they're, I mean, I don't see a reason, like you said, to put grass in now. But if next year, they say, oh, we have these bushes, I mean, it also doesn't have to be a vegetable garden, it can be like.
Fruit bearing bushes.
Fruit bearing bushes and things like that and whatever. And then, you know what, even if we put grass in in the spring and then they wanna cut out sections here and there, wherever, I mean, the right out front, you don't want.
Best time to do grass is in the fall.
Really?
Yeah, best time to seed.
Oh, boy, I'm in trouble.
We'll have the recommendations on CIT or from, uh, Kurt, I guess, soon.
Okay.
I mean, I'm guessing, I'm asking.
Oh, yeah.
I, I was under the impression that the best time to seed is not right now, the best time to seed is right now, but, you know, I'm not, you know. And that, that makes it different.
Yeah, so maybe we'll just, I mean, how much can seed cost to just cross and seed down? That is very.
Well, that, that, that's, it's more to it than that.
Putting in a moan, I can tell you.
She really put in a moan.
And they are check, the CIT is checking with the VFW, right? About the, the flowers around the monuments which aren't being maintained.
Or just how to spiff up those monuments.
They may prefer not to, wanna spiff them up and.
Well, I mean, so that you can see them and things.
Right, they need to be.
I mean, I think this is the kind of thing that, um, Team New Pauls can take on.
Team New Pauls?
We could have weeding, weeding parties.
Alright, I'll find out what CIT wants to do.
Number nine, uh, Stuart, I assume this is you?
Yeah, I put the quarterly reports on there because we, we passed those and Sally did some, I did some. And nobody else has done them, so I don't know if that's just rejecting them quietly or what.
No, we organized it.
I will say that, that several of the, uh, things I was liaison to, it, it proved to be quite helpful. Because I would say to them, well, what do you want me to say in my quarterly report? And they came up with things and, and they were hopeful and the board would read these and know what was going on. So I see value in it, but if nobody plans on doing it, then, you know, maybe we should do way with it.
Maybe it's a good, maybe it's a good idea in the wrong vehicle, you know, we can, we're experimenting, so what, I mean, it's about the, like.
Well, actually, can, can I?
How about if I had it be written and to give a verbal committee report?
That's what it used to have.
Yeah, before you say, let me just say initially, that, that the quarterly reports is a form and has about four lines on it. And you could fill it out in two minutes.
Okay.
And the ones that I submitted, I attached a lot of things to them, but you don't have to do that. Just one meeting that you go to, you know, what did you, you know, you wouldn't have to spend days doing it.
I mean, I don't have a fillable out, like a form that's fillable.
I have a suggestion. The mayor is trying to institute monthly reports by department heads. I believe each of us should also do a monthly report with our liaisons.
Yeah.
Each volunteer board has to do, the chair has to file it?
No, no, the liaison, the liaison has to file.
So the ENCC report, the housing board report, that kind of thing?
Yeah, and it goes in our monthly report that we do, you're do, doing one. Nancy's doing one, Kurt's doing one, I think each of us, that would be very easy.
Each liaisonship, but basically a trust, a trustee of the trust, a mayor's reporting. Something that's, that logs what we are working on, like the same way that they're logging that they're working.
Only fair and it sets a very good example for our department heads. And encourages the mayor to do it too, because he started it and I think we oughta support it.
Okay, I came up with this proposal, I haven't presented it to you yet, cause it was just an idea that came up this week. But I was thinking we do these informational meetings, so like, when I talked to Stuart about it, he said maybe a quarterly type thing. But, um, kinda based on the, the parliament model where you do like the information hour or the question hour, but, but not exactly. And we could have our department heads here and we can have all the trustees here. And we can each give a five minute verbal report and it also kinda does like the, the state of the village thing, but it's on a, hey, Don? Um, it also does like a state of the village thing, so each trustee, the mayor, and all the department heads can each give a five minute report. And there'll be an opportunity for each of us to ask questions. And then we get, and we can have a very brief, like, we, I mean, we would obviously have to keep it very structured. Because, you know, there's, um, nine of us, or, I'm thinking like four department heads and then the five of us is nine. Times that by five, you have forty-five, so it's forty-five minutes, tossing questions, so it, it could be like a two hour thing. But it would be an opportunity for the village to hear any of our ideas, any reports we wanna toss out there.
Love it.
You like it?
Yeah, but we have to.
You can't do it every month.
Yes, yes.
Brian's up quarterly.
Yeah.
So I was, I was thinking quarterly, you know, I was thinking once a month, but Stuart made the point that our workshop meetings can be very important. And they can be very beneficial to all of us, so if we institute this maybe a quarterly thing.
Which would be the workshop meeting.
Which would be the workshop meeting of each quarter, you know? And then, uh, I think it'd be nice, I think it'd be like a, a little switch up and it would give each of us an opportunity to talk about the projects we like. And the things we wanna implement. And they can talk about their projects or what's going on in the department. Blue can be here, we can hash things out. They're, they are gonna hate it.
They all hate it on TV.
They're gonna hate it.
Yeah, because it's bringing them out at night.
It's, it's for proof. I, I think, I think that this is a great idea, it'll bring so much transparency.
Right, yeah, it really opens things up. I can make a more formal proposal.
Alright, so we're, we're wandering off topic. Now, so you're gonna have a proposal for this?
I was planning on bringing out a proposal for this within the next two weeks, so maybe I can get on the next agenda.
Couple meetings.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great, perfect, cause.
And then we can talk about doing the reports and whatever else.
Yeah, I mean, is there any other?
I, I think, uh, yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, that's something that we should do as well as what Sally was saying with these.
The monthly as well.
I think we should do it.
And, I mean, I, I think, uh, you know, it'll, if we could just create a bullet list like that, like what we get sent, that would be great. I also, I actually, while we're on this topic, have been thinking about the monthly reports. And I really think that, um, the DBW should be weekly as well. Um, because if, I mean, there's so much going on in the week to week. It's the same level of, uh, action as the building department, in my opinion. And I would imagine that if you're logging all the things you're doing, you're logging it regularly. So there should be no reason why we couldn't receive that once a week as well. Um, unless there's, unless the ratings again, months log everything, but I just don't.
I think, I think what it is, the intent of doing a lot of routine stuff every week, with the same stuff week after week after week, so.
But it takes time, Ariana, and, and we talked about this in personnel. And both Blue and Nancy felt that for what they had to report, monthly was. And I think we concurred with that, because.
You mean, you mean instead of weekly?
Instead of weekly, the building department has.
The rate of deadlines, I think.
Presumably the, the mayor's speaking to them more frequently than anyway.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I think that we should operate all the departments under the same standard personally. Um, you know, and this is being from outside the personnel committee, so, you know, I don't see as much of the day to day stuff as you do or possibly you do. But I think that it's, it's fair and I think that it, you know, because, uh, uh, I'm, you know, I'm working nine to five now. I, I really can't make it down here during the day, it's hard for me to, you know, speak to people during the day. At least this would give me a little bit more of an idea as to like what's going on and.
Well, the other thing is that this, the way we're doing now is all stopgap measurement. Because like we're about, we're gonna be analyzing with technology group, um, all the new tools that come with our software. So there's gonna be a lot more online collaboration, you know, so basically all these reports, as well as all our forms and files and bill pay. Over the next few months will be integrated on the website as we figure it out. But then it'll be all shared docs, so when a local proposal is posted, the local doc, like Google Docs, but with more elaborate features.
Right.
So we're all literally on the same page and that might be good, cause you have internal basically message boards. So we could keep like the, and it's accessible to our website, so it's all the same layout every time you check it, so just as things get updated by users, it's all. So things like, that is where we're headed, but for now, if I'll talk to Blue about what changes, you know, between a week and a month, if it. If we'd be having that much more information.
Can I just say something?
Yeah.
Okay, I believe the monthly reports and the weekly reports are a management tool. I think it is something we can make suggestions to the mayor about. But I think this is his call, he is the manager on a day to day basis. I'm just trying to figure out a way that we can fit into this. So that we're all in a scope together. I don't think we should be doing weekly, I think monthly and is yours at the end of the month or the beginning?
Hmm?
Your monthly report, when you do it.
I haven't made one.
Yes, you did one.
Did you?
You did, actually, you did two.
I don't know.
And so.
I don't think so, you may be confusing.
I, I think so, because I don't.
I've never read, I don't. I've never written, I don't have a writing.
I I think you remember writing it.
Yeah, cause the department head reports basically hit everything that happens, there's almost nothing that's.
Okay, and if you weren't doing it, guess what?
Someone's just hacking and sending mayor updates.
You're gonna do it. And we'll do it too. But but end of month seems to be more logical because then we've had our.
How about in terms of the the vehicle for all this stuff, since so, cause we're, it's already tense on. Um, why don't we just put both of these things in these rules and probably take out the quarterly reports? Um, I mean, that's a way to part this stuff, that's where you part this stuff.
That's a better way to do it, as long as we do something.
No, it's what Sally's like, provides the quarterly report part of our rules into this new month and just what would be in it, you know, the expectations. And Brian has the, what was the other policy?
The the information.
Oh, the international.
And I and I think that's kinda different, but I think that has a lot of potential and I don't, you know, how frequently you do it, you know, it can discuss, but I think. I think that would be a good thing.
Well, but I think that.
Rules change, so it's in that one document, so successive boards.
Okay, I think we have to be careful there, we can ask people to come, but they can refuse to come.
No.
Because it's not.
No, not at all, no, completely not, they're salary employees and they are, I mean, a huge information base. And I think it would be very beneficial to have them here and hash certain things out.
I'm not arguing the benefit of it, I'm saying, if people are employed to work. A certain number of hours a day, a certain number of hours a week on it.
Okay.
Terms and conditions of employment.
Two hours.
But their salary.
Are they, they're managing.
Right, they're management, yeah, you call them to a meeting and they gotta be here for a meeting, definitely.
They could ask you to come to a meeting and you better get yourself there too, and you don't.
That's not how it works, that's not how it works.
Yes, it is how.
They're not my boss.
Well, how about, how about if we ask them to come, come here, we have a two hour meeting, we allow them, allow them to come in two hours later the next day or whatever it is.
But I don't, I don't.
I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with that, I I don't, I don't have a problem with any of this.
Right.
I I I'm trying to find the best way for us.
We don't even have a proposal yet, we're already arguing about it from the.
We're arguing.
Maybe we have it, can we get it in writing on like on an agenda, so we.
We're arguing, are we arguing?
Well, yeah.
It's gonna, it was gonna, it's gonna work.
We're finding the path to compromise.
Yes.
Well, let's find it at enough.
I'll, 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 I'll make this proposal. So Dawn is here, maybe, did you see something on public access that you wanted?
I was watching on channel twenty three and I, I wondered, is it true you have little Debbie donuts?
One left.
I knew that's why you came listening.
Can you, can you speak to, did the town pass it? They did pass it, right?
Yeah, I went, I went to the sound board meeting, uh, a couple week or two ago and they did pass the uh I N A. With the provision that it would be passed annually at the reorg meeting. So that that is part, that is the way they passed it.
Okay.
Um, and they're comfortable with that and I, I guess I would recommend if you all could live within, I heard the discussion you had. Uh, I think the public access, they live with that.
Yeah.
Basically, you're the folks that wanted to be longer, so we didn't have to get into it.
Yeah.
Now I guess you gotta do what you gotta do, right?
Well, I think technically your agenda would be an act that could engender public comment that we can speak to, so it's both on there. And it has to be removed publicly, you know, I think we're.
So do we have to, do we have to amend the I, this I M A for ourselves to?
I think we need to get one that's actually adapted by the town.
Okay. So the, so the next one will pass it.
Iteration of it.
Okay.
But I can also, uh, one more public access thing. Dave Lance, who was representative of town on the committee for many, many years, is gonna be resigned, he's served, I think, seven years. And Dave got on the committee until the franchise agreement was renewed seven years ago. Um, he's been incredible in his expertise uh in dealing with time orders, it has been Dave's opinion. And I guess the committee talked about it, we, we agree and I think the town board agrees that, um, time order is not actually a good thing for me to. They're just not.
Really, a lawsuit?
We still don't have the bill.
You hear that time water?
Uh, no, we've got no satisfaction construction, but we don't have the second check, you know, just all the things that we were to have as of January first of this year. You know, the the goalpost keeps moving.
Right.
And the sound keeps getting softer.
Yeah, yeah, it's uh, it's 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 crazy.
Well, you know, Jason, your idea was actually mentioned at the town as well.
Oh, yeah?
About the scrolling thing across the bottom and.
It's the home phone number of the CEO or what?
Well, it doesn't even have to be the home phone, it could just be the complaint department or um whoever.
Management.
Well, who, who do we speak with over there?
Who has Brenda Parks.
Brenda Parks.
Who's Brenda, Brenda Parks' boss?
Uh, she's the customer relations guy.
Yeah, we need the head of whoever that is, that's.
Yeah, Susan Susan Simmons is on the phone with that person, so we.
So, so look at her number.
We theorize that um time order may have boosted the signal a a little bit because. Recently, past couple weeks, especially transmissions from the village have been kind of ringing out, there've been some new quality issues and. And uh, the public access coordinator is trying to play with the signal a bit, try to make sure that that doesn't happen anymore, it's always uh, always interesting. Anyway, uh, channel twenty three got me down here, but for your conversation.
That's it?
Out of the garden.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dawn, for coming.
Many thanks. Can we point you to anything, Don? Can we point you to anything while you're here?
Uh, no.
Take your donut, man.
You're gonna be moved to.
I don't know. Hold on, let me, what's going on? Actually, um, are there, well, let me ask this one question, are there any? Changes, questions or concerns about ten through fourteen?
Um, I will prove that contingent of, the arts community requests contingent on their insurance because we don't have the insurance here.
Other than that, could I make a motion to adopt all five items with that caveat, or is there another, or should we do it one at a time?
Oh, I have, I have one question, I would be willing to do all that, but. The number thirteen.
Yeah.
The document we received, um, describing the. The situation, I guess, I forget what the actual.
Clarification, Nick?
Clarify, who wrote that? It's like not.
Mine's out of order all too.
Thir- yeah, thirteen fourteen, um. Who, who wrote that?
Probably Heather. Cause Blue sends his on top of the.
Right, he sends his unofficial letterhead, so I assume that it wa, you know. And I would think someone from the.
Nick maybe.
The water plant, I mean.
Yeah, Blue's out, was Blue out last week?
Uh, he was out at least one day, he was very sick.
It might, it might have just been, just not knowing where the memo that referred that they go on a letterhead, so I mean, do you. Is there some information that seems shady or just?
No, it's not, it's not a huge thing, but you know, I just, I was, you know, I was reading it and I was like, yeah, who is this from, what's, you know? Especially because the the next document is just this, the application with FEMA, and I was like, well, was it written by FEMA?
Well, I'll mention to Blue to make sure it goes on the memo, but also that's another thing we're gonna be dealing with. And all the kind of, you know, the new thing, getting um centralized styles and fonts and all, everything templated, so just hit to, you know, whenever you need to document.
Yeah, yeah. It'd be nice to do some, um, what do they call those, like writable PDFs?
Yeah, those, those will be having, you know, everything the same, everything the same font and layout and.
I just have a question of clarification.
Yeah.
Am I authorizing to pay the bill and then sub, then apply for a grant to get some of it back? Or am I applying for the grant? What am I paying for? Cause it's a proposal and invoice. For the generator.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is a reimbursement, I believe.
It, so we're looking for reimbursement, but we may not get it.
And it's saying we're shy on, we're not gonna get certain monies too, we're losing ten thousand. Um.
Mm-hmm.
And that, and this.
Actually, I think, I think we're not, I I, oh, man, that one should have.
Could, would it be possible to hold this off, find out like where it came from and get? A little more of an explanation?
Yeah, yeah.
Like, there may be a deadline on this.
Oh, it doesn't say that there's a, no, it doesn't say that we're short in money, it just says the bids came in with with a s- a spread.
My only question, Jason, is, am I guaranteed this or is this a maybe?
We are, no, the guar, it's it is, it's a female guarantee, this is a paper we have to file to get reimbursed for the money we already laid out from the sewer fund. To replace the generator, that's what this was.
Okay, so I will rule it.
Yes, and I'll second it, um.
So that's separate than, than bundling with.
I think, I think because it's a grant, we ought to do it separately.
Okay.
Alright, so at least we have the motion on the table now, now, are there, are any other concerns or questions, Brian, is that a uh lethal, not lethal, what's the word? Is there a concern you'd rather not vote on it?
Deal killer.
Deal killer, whatever it is. I mean, it's uh from what, look, my understanding is it's just um, finally people scheme to get a money.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I might, I might just, you know, vote nay, but if everyone else is gonna vote yea, then you don't need nay.
Um, well, it will be in a problem if we all would know of this deadline, so is there anyone else who's concerned, I'd rather hear and try to view before we go?
Um, you know, I don't really, um, I just, you know, I wanted to make sure this was what it thought it was and if, I guess it sounds like it is.
Yeah, we're still beyond the.
Self-brand application.
Uh, Stuart, any concerns?
No, that's what's recommended on both.
So the motion's on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Uh, oh, aye.
Five ayes, Katie.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, now with, uh, um, I'll move we adopt, approve those claims.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, I move we approve the parade, uh, event request, uh, with Sally's caveat.
Pending insurance.
Yeah, pending insurance, thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That, and I'll move to adopt the, uh, approve the billboard minutes.
Um, I'll second, but I have an edit, um, in the, on the first page, um, it says. Um, residents will need to take their chickens to a professional who can humanly slaughter them, it's supposed to be manly.
Oh, no, it's not.
I just felt like that was a little bit important.
Thanks, Justin, can you make, not a problem.
Okay, yeah.
So, so on, on page, on page three, there's something about raining chicken.
R E I T or R A I N?